We would like to call to honor
No problem.
Our November the 3rd, 2021 School Board meeting. And we're delighted to have everyone here and delighted to have our viewing audience. And certainly one day after all of the going's on yesterday, we look forward to public education moving forward in Virginia. At this time, I would like to move to Section B, which is our agenda approval. And I do want the board to know that Dr. Nellis did inform me that he will not be here tonight as he is just mending himself in a certain way. But certainly does give us his best. But the agenda is before you, that is on board docs and has been featured. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's school board meeting?
I move to approve this school board agenda for tonight.
It's been moved by Ms. Morrison, seconded by Dr. Carter, that we will approve the agenda as presented before you tonight. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
School Board Member Trose?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now stand for our pledge of allegiance. It's so important at this hour. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank everyone here tonight. And we will now move to Section C, which is a section regarding a closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1. The school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters: A personnel matter involving the demotion, discipline, or resignation of a specific staff member. This is for action, obviously. Is there a motion for us to go into closed meeting?
A move that we go into closed meeting?
Been moved by Dr. Carter, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Dr. Brennan. Is there any questions or discussion? Then Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Trose?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
School Board Member Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, we will now be going to closed meeting.
Upstairs.
Upstairs, our regular meeting. We'll be right back to everybody.
All right. I now need a motion to come out of closed meeting.
A move that we come out of closed meeting.
Yes, second?
Second.
The move by Dr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Morrison, that we come out of closed meeting. No further questions or discussion, although, well, now, would you please call the rule?
Scoop up, remember, Tost?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion eight to zero.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.23711A1, the school board needs now to certify that all of the matters that were discussed were pertaining to what was aforementioned. I want to now ask the clerk to please call the rule.
Scoop up, remember, Tost?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Board. We will now move to Section D, which is our special presentation. And we are delighted tonight to have representatives from Dominion Seven Architects that will give us an update on the work of the team conducting the facility studies. Welcome.
Good evening. Yes, tonight, we have an update on the facility study that is being conducted by Dominion Seven Architects. And so, tonight, we have Blair Smith and Jacob Caldwell to give a presentation.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you for letting us have this opportunity to work with you on this project. Taking care of buildings is hard. I mean, teaching's hard, taking care of buildings is hard, finding the money for it is hard, everything about it is hard. So, what we want to try to do today is kind of give you an update of what we've done and where we're going. So, with that in mind, just kind of a quick agenda for tonight. We'll talk about what we're, you know, supposed to be doing. We're going to talk about where we're going down the road and what we need to do next. So, you know, it's kind of been interesting because my entire career, I've been kind of doing schoolwork for the Lynchburg City Schools. And the first real project I ever did for the school system was the addition at Paul Monroe. And I hadn't been in that building in 31 years. And it was really kind of fun to kind of go back, and it was really a deja vu to go back into that back in September when we started working. So, it was a nice feeling to be back into that school again. So, I'm an architect, and Jacob's an architect, and Gary Harvey's an architect. And I don't know if it's a privilege, or maybe, I mean, there's all different types of words, but one of the things we had to do in architectural school was to present our designs, right? And we had to present it with our peers in front of faculty, and they told us how bad we were, basically. Gary, you remember those fun days, right? So, a lot of times, you'd have a professor, after you presented, would come back around and say, you know, yeah, you know, you got some criticism here, some critique, but, you know, these were the good things about it. And that's kind of how I wanted to start tonight, is to talk about, it looks like we're not moving forward. Very well. I've got some technical difficulties here. So, I'll just kind of, I don't want to, I don't want this to come off that, I think there's a difference between being critical and critiquing, okay? And I think that's kind of an important thing to do as we move forward. And so, we're not really pointing fingers, so it's not that the school board today, or the school board 20 years ago, or Steve Gasky, or city council, or the architects you've worked with, we're not saying that they haven't done their job. Because as I started, it's really hard to do this, okay? And so, we're not really pointing fingers at anyone with this. We are going to point out some negative things that we're finding, but that's not really the emphasis of what we're doing, okay? So, our goal was really to point out both the positives and the negatives, and to kind of assist you in how to improve your facilities as we go down the road. And the other thing, I would give you this as a perspective, is, we were just talking in the lobby, and Steve says he has nothing to do at home over his Christmas break. I got plenty of things at my house for Steve to do over Christmas break. I just got to get him there. And that's one of the challenges, is even our own homes, or perhaps our own office, there are facility needs there that we just haven't gotten to, right? And so, that's a perspective I think we need to kind of, kind of keep. I don't know where our presentation is.
Just text to see if we have a tech who can come and assist. Do you have a hard copy? Because I have a hard copy.
I, I have a hard copy with me, but only one, yeah.
I can make copies for the board, I just want to.
But let's see here, we got, we got.
Is this going to all work out?
Yes, yes, because you have some nice photos in here, and we want to make sure we see them.
So, at this point in the presentation, Dr. Edwards is going to give us a song and dance.
All right.
So, that was a special part of this presentation that you didn't know about.
I'm glad you didn't ask for the scene, everybody.
Oh, who's at the door? See if who's at the door.
All right. So, I think the first question, as we start to talk about these things, and we've got our video back now, is who is our client? And you're going to go, duh, it's Lynchburg City Schools. And we're still not moving forward, so I don't know if you can text your guy again.
It's not advancing.
Let's just get the paper copies and roll.
All right, if you will just give us a minute or two, and we'll pause.
Can we just skip this item on the agenda and come back to it?
Screen sharing.
We've lost our superintendent, so it's a lot.
Drop in the video.
We're just going to give it a couple of minutes, please, if everybody could just indulge, just, this is very important.
Okay, we'll keep going. So, anyway, it looks like we got something back for the time being. So, you're going to say, obviously, Lynchburg City Schools is our client. But the reality is, the city as a whole is also a client, because they're an invested partner in all this. That's really not who we're doing this for. We're doing it for these folks, okay? That's what this is all about. It's not only for your kids for today, but also for the kids tomorrow, of all different types, and regardless of their needs. Another thing I think this is important, and I would say personally, I feel like education is really a key to getting out of poverty. And if this is an initiative by the city, I think improving your school facilities and the offerings that you do have as far as programs is a way to kind of bridge that gap, to get folks out of poverty. So, with that, I'm going to let Jacob take over and kind of tell you where we have started.
So, our four main tasks that we're going to talk very briefly about tonight are the facility condition assessment, a little bit about educational programming, some on demographics, and a couple of recommendations as we move forward. And I'd just like to reflect that we're not talking about classrooms back when a lot of these schools were built, like the picture there in the upper right. But the classrooms of today are very much different, very colorful, very flexible for the learning environment that's taking place there. So, our four tasks, first of all, is the facility condition assessment survey. So, the team we assembled is not only Dominion Seven, we used locally Hurt and Profit Civil Engineers, and also Southern Air teamed up with us to help out with the MEP portions. So, we've completed all of our school visits and field work, the kind of gather phase, gathering information phase of the project. And we're still working on project narratives for each of the schools. That is an ongoing topic. Educational programming, we've met with principal and staff at each of the schools to discuss that. And again, we've kind of completed the gathering information phase on that. Still working on narrative and looking at capacity of different schools and classrooms, how spaces are being utilized, are they being used in an efficient manner, and we do anything to improve that. Moving on, demographics, we hired a national firm, proper GIS, has done work not only in Virginia, a lot up and down the East Coast and throughout the nation. They are the expert when it comes to demographics. Their work just began here, the first part of November, and will be ongoing. And as far as recommendations, we have provided some cost estimating to date. Most of that has been in relation to development of a 10-year CIP, which will go to city council here very shortly. And we'll touch on a couple of future recommendations that we've gotten to so far. So, many of you might wonder what a facility condition assessment is. We've looked at each school site, looking at traffic flow, both pedestrian, human traffic, bus traffic, also vehicular traffic, landscaping. There's a lot of trees, bushes, shrubs that have to be taken care of, yards have to be mowed, parking, what happens with all the stormwater runoff at the different sites. As you know, Lynchburg is the hill city, so that can be a challenge at some of the sites that you guys have. Hurt and Profit has helped out here with a lot of this portion of the work. Moving on to the buildings, we looked at not only the outside exterior envelope, roofing, walls, windows, doors, how are the buildings performing thermally? Are they efficient? Are they up to code? Also, some interior features as well, do they meet ADA? There's some life safety building code, things that we looked at, regulations, and of course, security. Southern Air helped with MEP systems here, plumbing, HVAC, electrical, low voltage systems, again, being IT and cameras and that kind of thing. They're also looking at energy usage, what kind of, what kind of power bills, utility bills, they're reviewing all that information to see if things are functioning like they were designed, if not, why, and what can be done to make them function more efficiently in the future. So, to date, this is what we've done. We've assembled all the existing drawings, not only from the original buildings, but any of your buildings have at least one addition or renovation, if not multiple renovation or additions over the years. We've taken all those drawings, we've got those scanned, they are in PDF format, they will be shared with the school system. We've also drawn each of the schools in 3D. That helps us with our calculations for MEP with volumes of rooms, and also square footages for classrooms and other spaces. We've completed site visits and field work, and we've completed school evaluations. That moves us to what is left to do. School narratives, as far as the facilities go, that's an ongoing topic. We are currently wrapping those up. We expect to have elementary school rankings to you by mid-November. We'll follow up with middle and high school by the end of the month. There's a couple of key meetings that we still need to set up with school staff, an IT meeting with John Collins, and a food service meeting with Beth Mars. So, the facility condition assessment, what you're going to get out of this are easy-to-read charts, like the one that you see here. They are color-coded based on the conditions of things at the school. Any item in red is something you want to pay attention to, that is something that needs immediate attention, or is out of its useful lifespan. These vary from school to school. This is an actual chart from one of the schools that you see here. Southern Air is going to also provide a similar type chart for MEP systems, again, with the same color coding, red being key items that need immediate attention, or items where the estimated life remaining has expired.
All right, thank you, Jacob. We're also looking at programming of the schools, and so, as Jacob mentioned, we've met with everybody. We're trying to figure out, you know, a school was designed, you know, back whenever the date was, but things have changed. And so, we want to find out how you're currently operating that school. And we'll talk more specifically in a few minutes about some things that have come up. We're figuring out, okay, you've got a first-grade classroom that's 800 square feet. How does that compare to the guidelines from the Department of Education? And then, how does that compare to what our recommendations are going to be? Because those three things are very different. We're also looking at, if you take up, if you take all the usable spaces, so example, you take the square footage of this room, and you add all these rooms together, you have usable space like this, and then you have nonusable space like corridors, right, and stairs, and the thickness of walls. And so, we're looking at those comparisons, or how efficient the school is in terms of usable space. We're also determining the capacity of a school, and comparing that to how many students you have in the school, to see if you're over, you know, overcapacity or undercapacity, because that's been a question that's been out there. So, this is an example of a space program that we've done. So, what you're seeing, the floor plan is Bedford Hills, okay? So, Bedford Hills was a school that we worked on. It was originally L-shaped, like the bottom there, the bottom bar and the top left bar. There was a fire in November of 1991. There was a fire in November of 91, it burned that bottom bar down, so we got hired to put it back together, so the bottom bar was rebuilt, and there was addition put on the, off of that to kind of create this U-shaped thing, right? So the advantage that Bedford Hills has is it was basically reconfigured in the early 90s. And so if you look at the space program, you see the spaces that you would typically find, the core classrooms in a elementary school. There's no pre-kindergarten classroom there, but it has kindergarten through fifth, and we also have some extended learning areas that we'll talk about in a bit. But if you look down at the bottom, you'll see a total square footage of the net usable space is about 20,441 versus what the state Department of Education recommends is about 20,000. You're right in line there, right? But it's because this school was fully renovated. Here's Darrington. If you look at the same thing, then the bottom, it's a smaller school, granted, but the usable space for the classrooms, the core classrooms, is only about 9,400 versus what it should be per the state is around 11,000. So you may have enough classrooms, but they may not be the right size, okay? Extended learning areas is something that we're finding is occurring, it was a higher education trend that has trickled down to the K-12 level. At first, you saw it in high schools, but it's now trickled down to middle and elementary schools. And basically, it's a space where you can take a child out of a classroom and do one-on-one instruction, or maybe it's a small group out of a classroom that can get out of the classroom and do some specialized instruction. You don't have those spaces, except at Sandusky Elementary School, which is kind of interesting. Everybody else gets pulled into a hallway, and depending on how the school is configured, if it has narrow corridors, it's hard to do that. TC Miller's doing a really good job of creating spaces in their school to do that. And so that is something, as we move forward, we probably need to try to create in these schools. Jacob also mentioned flexibility. We'd need different ways to teach in a classroom because students learn differently. And we need spaces that can be set up in electra-style, in group-style, in individual, you know, kind of workspaces. And one of the keys there is furniture, frankly. But the classroom needs to be a big enough classroom, like what you have at Bedford Hills versus Darrington, to be able to do these things. Just because you have nice furniture in there that's flexible, if you don't have enough room, it's hard to do these things. This is a quick chart on capacity and utilization. Now, we don't want like the picture at the bottom left where everybody's just in there like a bunch of sardines. Once again, we have things that are color-coded here, right? So this is kind of a review of your elementary schools. The third column is your 2012, 2013 enrollment, okay? The fourth column is what I was told, how many students were at the school when we went and visited them. It may not match your fall membership, I haven't, I just haven't processed that information yet, so my numbers may be slightly off. The functional capacity is the second column. And so I have then calculated the utilization rate, okay? So if you were to look at Bass Elementary School, which is the second one down, in 2012, it was, you know, it was approaching being overcapacity. But now, based on the enrollment that's currently out there, it's adequate. And so what you're seeing with that 2012, 2013 column is there's a lot of yellow in there, which tells us there was adequate room there. At Sandusky and Sheffield, and Bass that were getting full, Bedford Hills was overcapacity. Then, when you start to look at the current numbers, you're starting to see a lot of greens and blues. And what that means is, you don't have enough kids in those schools. But I caution you that this year and last year are not great years because of COVID to judge whether your schools are being fully utilized, okay? We're just in, you know, we live in a weird world, and that's kind of where we are right now, okay? So that's something we'll have to talk about moving down the road.
Nice, just interrupt you and just let board members know, I was able to upload this to Board Docs, so if you go back in, and for the public too, if you log out and log back in, you should be able to get a copy of this.
Thank you, Crystal.
The demographics work just began on November the 1st, and the reason for that is, we were waiting on fall membership numbers. Those numbers are usually not posted until late October, so that's kind of a normal timeline of events there. I mentioned Cropper has done work in other parts, other than Virginia. Here's an actual chart from some of their work, and you will be getting something similar to this. They're gonna both look at a division-wide forecast, which I believe is what you see here, and everything in the green are actual numbers based on information collected, and then on the right side, the numbers in blue are projected numbers. Again, you'll receive something very similar to this later on, once they have completed their work. And then also, you'll receive a per-school forecast. Again, the numbers on the left side in the green are actual numbers of attendance, numbers on the right side in the blue are projected or forecasted numbers. So what's gonna drive the decisions that you guys make? Is it gonna be facility assessment, the condition of facilities? Is it gonna be the demographics? Or is it gonna be the future of education and how things are gonna be taught? That's actually a trick question. It's really gonna be all three of those. All three of those are coming into play in this facility assessment and how decisions are gonna be made.
So that leads us to our last task, which are the recommendations. And so we've been working on helping Steve with his CIP, which is now gonna be for 10 years versus the traditional five, and that's been a big effort here the last several weeks as we've moved through this. One of the things we are gonna give Steve is a maintenance repair list. These will be things that are in immediate need of repair. These will be more things like roofs and heating and cooling systems, more so than do we build an addition at a school or something like that. We also want to talk about attendance zones, okay? So, I know I get into groans. So Jacob mentioned we've got this national firm doing demographic projections for us, and you share this with them, and they go, oh my gosh, I've never seen anything like that in my life. And there's a history behind it, that, you know, when the schools were desegregated, there were some requirements put onto the school system to kind of, to create a fair and equitable type of arrangement. The problem is, is back in the 70s, you had a primary school and an elementary school, and you no longer have that. So that's one problem. To keep the racial balance in the schools, you kind of created innovation centers at several of your schools to kind of help improve those, the makeup of the schools that the feds wanted you to have when things were desegregated. But the problem with this is you have students, and I think Heritage, which is in the, down the bottom, that Regis called it down the bottom, you know, they're pulling kids from their area, but then they're pulling kids from downtown. And the problem with that is, and I get the racial mix, I get that, but the problem is, a kid downtown, their friends may not go to that school. Or there is a school, there's an apartment complex, and I think it's in the orangey-yellow color, that depending on where you live in the apartment complex, you go to one school and everybody else goes to the other school. And they're just, that's something we'd like to kind of see what we can do to kind of clean things up for you. And so that'll be one of the things we'll look at. And the reason I bring that up is, our demographic expert has worked for the city of Richmond. And so this is a map from the city of Richmond. This happens to be a recommendation, one of the options in terms of how to kind of redistrict and do things. And once, they're processing all the data that you have sent, and appreciate Amy sending all that to them, because they can take these options and then they can look at the racial makeup of the schools, okay? So we're kind of meeting all the requirements. So this is just something that people, I mean, this is hard, this, when we talk about, this is hard. We start redistricting, it's hard, right? I'm not gonna deny that. But it's just, it's one of the things we probably should look at, and so it's one of our tasks. The other thing I was gonna mention to you is some things that kind of we have discovered. And the reality is, we have been through all of your schools, and all of them need work, okay? When I, when we first started pursuing this job, because it was a public job, and we have to, you know, submit our qualifications and everything, my brain is telling me, you know, the elementary schools are in pretty good shape, because I worked on a lot of them. But then I realize, I'm getting old. And I mentioned to you earlier that my first project was kind of dealing with, you know, an addition to a school 31 years ago, and Jacob's gonna talk about the problems associated with that in a little bit. The other issue that you have is, there are some schools that have had a complete renovation, like Bedford Hills, like Sheffield, but there are others that haven't been touched, okay? And so that becomes a problem. We have ADA, which is accessibility issues at a lot of the schools. We have storage issues, or maybe you've got too much stuff, I don't know what it is. We don't have hot water there at a lot of the sinks in the elementary schools. The other thing we noticed is, you don't have computer labs anymore. And so a lot of these schools were designed with computer labs, not at them. And so if you go to Bass Elementary School today, you will notice that the old computer lab is now being used as an art classroom. Well, if we were designing an art classroom for an elementary school, it wouldn't look like a computer lab, okay? And you're using Chromebooks now. And so the other thing that we've noticed, and even a school like Sandusky Middle School, which our firm designed, is about 10 years old now, it was never designed to have the amount of support space for like behavior coaches, psychologists, these types of people. And you have a lot of those types of people in your schools now, and they're not using an appropriate space. They're not using an office, or maybe a space that's a little bigger than the office. You may have two of them in a full-size classroom, okay? So there's some problems with that. Obviously, we live in a world that's scary and added security vestibules, we now have COVID requirements, and we have rooms that are set up for quarantine, and so that's kind of where it is. So here's some more things, and this is kind of, so this is kind of the sobering news. These are the four challenges that we kind of see right now, and granted, we're not, we've just started, but declining enrollment with changing demographics, the aging of facilities, falling behind with major improvements. That's kind of interesting that we, when we've been talking about, and cost increase. Let me talk about the enrollment little piece first, and then I'm gonna turn it back over to Jacob. Once again, I haven't, I haven't processed your fall membership numbers yet, okay? So we'll get there. The blue bars are from the 2003, 2004 screen, the orange bars are from 2019 to 2020. And what you see here is, if you tallyed all of this up, overall, your membership or your enrollment is declining. You do have some schools, Heritage Elementary, Robert S. Payne, a little bit of Dunbar Middle School that, Sheffield, that are increasing in population, but the balance of them, especially at the middle and high school level, are really declining. Here's another interesting graph. So once again, the top two pies are from the same school years. And when we look at the racial makeup of your schools, comparing 2003, '04 to 1920 on the top, the yellow are the white students, all the other colors are your minority races. And what you see with this is that the population of your school for the white students is declining, the African-American students are basically staying the same, what's increasing are the Hispanic population, and the ones in that lighter blue color, which are multi-race students, okay? But then, if you look at how that compares to the city, and you see that the city's population, once again, I don't have those exact years because of the census, I've got 2000 to 2010, but it still tells the story, your populations for the city don't match the populations in your school, okay? And so that's really the point of the slide here. I don't have that answer why, okay? I'm not there yet, I don't have that answer. But I just want to make sure that you understand, and you probably do understand this. The other thing, and I guess I'm gonna tell you this, hopefully there's somebody from city council listening, okay? You know, parents who are better off, a lot of times, will send their kids to private schools, okay? They may homeschool them as well, or they may move to the county. The reality is, if you have a student who has some sort of challenge, special need, disability, whatever the case may be, they always stay in the public school system in most cases. And so what that means from a funding situation for the city is, it's more expensive to teach those kids, provide the services for those kids than it would be someone like me when I was growing up. And that's kind of the reality where you are in terms of your operational costs. You've got a lot of special needs kids that are expensive to take care of, and we need to take care of them. So I know you know that, I'm just, I'm telling it for city council, how about that?
So the age of your schools, if you look at these three statistics that are up here, just remember 70, 50, and 36. 70 is the average age of the original construction of your elementary schools. 50 is the middle, and then 36 for the high schools. So the five ages of school facilities. The first one here, there's basically, I'm just gonna kind of summarize, I'm not gonna read word for word, but there's limited maintenance, very minor improvements, that occurs within the first 20 years. Years 20 to 30, phase two, there's increasing amount of maintenance, maybe some things start to wear out, that's kind of to be expected. Phase three, in the 30 to 40-year, maintenance needs increase very rapidly during this point. 40 to 50, phase four, again, there's increasing amounts of maintenance and more frequent replacement of worn-out parts, and usually after the 50-year mark, the building should either be reconstructed, abandoned, renovated, some type of major improvement. So if you look at the age of original construction, this has all your schools that we visited, excuse me, with the elementary coming first, and then middle and high school down at the end of the, end of the graph at the bottom. So your average age, again, is around between 60 and 70, and you'll see, in what we're gonna kind of call the red zone, being the 50-year-plus mark, there's a lot of schools that fall into that category. If you look at the age of your school renovations or new construction, you'll see there's, as Blair, I think, alluded to earlier, yes, a lot of schools have had renovations, some have not had a full-blown renovation, they've kind of been pieces and parts, but even those that have been renovated, it's been a long time, and that's what this chart is illustrating, again with the red zone out on the far right. You may wonder, while there's a few up there, that there's no bar. Those have not received a major or full-blown renovation since they were built. And that brings up the next topic, the falling behind with the major improvements. You can see here, this is an early timeline, I think we go back to 1980 through about 2000, and this is just kind of an overview of major construction work. So you'll see some renovations on here, renovation addition. I'll just point out a couple highlights here. EC glass renovation addition happened in the early 80s, that was a pretty substantial project, again, about a five-year project, and then moving down to something more recent at the very bottom with Sheffield and its And then moving down to something more recent at the very bottom, with Sheffield and its somewhat recent renovation addition, but now about twenty years old. So the problem here is that scheduling gaps start to appear. So looking at this timeline here, for, for example here, the Sandusky Middle School, new building, the proposed versus the actual. So proposed, it was first talked about in approximately '05, '06. It actually did not happen till 2010 or so. So again, there's a small gap there, not necessarily something to throw up a red flag, other than just bringing to your attention, there is a little bit of a scheduling gap. We see the same thing happening again with Heritage High School, the very last one. And this is the new building that was just somewhat recently completed. It was actually proposed in about '08 or so, again, not really taking ground until approximately 2015, 2016, about eight years or so after initially showing up. Scheduling gaps become worse over time. You can see here in the timeline, that the gaps between the lighter colors versus the darker colors are more. And again, with these projects here, the first proposed date is the lighter color. And as you move down, the current proposal, such as RS Payne Elementary, the very bottom one, the current proposal has that out at almost 2030 right now.
I, I had someone here in the audience look, said we had the wrong dates for EC Glass, and that's not really true. There was work in the eighties, and then there was work again in the, in the two thousands. So, you know, it's a big school, it's happened twice there. The challenge that we're having is, as these, as Jacob just showed you on those graphs real quick, is, as we have these gaps in these projects, the cost just keeps going up and up. Okay? And so, we have conversations, you know, now with our clients, and they go, it's no way that something will cost that much. And they just, they think we're crazy. I mean, I, I, I don't know what else to tell you. And so they think that cost increases are a COVID issue, because that's all we hear about now. But the reality is, the, the annual, year-to-year inflation of construction, the cost of construction, has always exceeded the cost of living. Always, by far. It also has increased from what the city of Lynchburg, or any other locality, can take in from a revenue standpoint. And so what you have, you have this graph, construction costs going like this, and the revenue generated by the city is here, and you've got this huge graph. I mean, who's, who's space in between? And what happens is, as we push a school down the road, and so Sandusky Elementary is supposed to be replaced in 2010, now it's 2026, it's sixteen years later. And as we keep pushing it down the road, and I step on somebody over here, it just, the costs just get out of control. And that's a challenge. Yes, COVID has impacted what we're doing. I'm not going to deny that. But it's not a, a big thing in terms of, you know, the long look. We also have talked about improving, you know, the, the quality of people's wages in this country, and increasing the minimum wage. So, everything that we have heard is COVID has created cost increases right with construction, or anything else. And what's going to happen is the material costs are going to start to flatten, but the labor rate's going to keep going up. Okay? So, you know, the good example of that is, if somebody right now works at McDonald's for $10 an hour, and we bump them to fifteen, then you've got to bump the manager from fifteen to twenty, and the Big Mac's just going to cost more. I mean, this is kind of the math, the way it works. Labor shortages and supply chain issues are going to continue. I was, I had a contractor in the office today, and he said, hey, we can, good news is, we can finally get overhead doors. Yay! We can't get the track. So I don't know what they're using, duct tape to put them up. I don't know how they're doing it. He also told me, if he, if he orders a pre-engineered building today, something that used to take eight to ten weeks, two years ago, takes a year to get all the parts. So, these things are going to continue, and you've heard about it on the news, and we don't need to reiterate that. This is a chart showing construction costs. If you start on the left-hand side, there are three bars, a green one, a blue one, and a grayish-blue one. The green is elementary, the blue in the middle is the middle school cost, and the next one is the high school cost. So if you look at 1962, which is the far left, an elementary school cost you $12 a square foot. That's when the first addition at Linkhorn Elementary School was built, that octagonal thing. I don't know what it costs, but the state average, and these numbers are from the state. They're not mine made up. So you can see this dramatic increase, and the last four bars are, are annual, the last several years. But the bottom line is, an elementary school that cost you $12 in 1962, based on last year's numbers, is almost $300 a square foot. And I mentioned how much of a gap it was between the cost of living. Well, look at this. There's your cost of living increase bar. It, it's just, how do you keep up is, is a problem. I mean, it's, it's a real problem. And as we push school improvements down the road, it's not like it's going to get better. We saw this chart. I'll put this up in terms of kind of labor shortages, in terms of how it relates to construction costs. I won't, it's pretty obvious that labor is, shortages are creating a problem in the construction industry. So I kind of finalize this with kind of the next steps. We need to do some work on our end, but we need a committee to kind of help review some of the information we have, and kind of talk about big-picture stuff, talk about, you know, what do we do about attendance zones, what's the future of education? We need to develop priorities. We're the consultant. This is your school system. I need your input. And I shouldn't give Dr. Edwards a to-do list, but I would like for her to take charge of that, to put that group together. We need to kind of finish up our stuff. Kind of curious what the demographic stuff is going to come back from our consultants. That will probably be towards the end of the year. The other thing we need to talk about is early childhood education. I, I don't want to get into politics. It's just, I'm sick of it, and I hate the news. And, and I realize that, you know, at the federal level, they're talking about putting some money into early childhood education. What I can tell you is, I think the future, regardless of who pays for it, is getting more three-year-olds into the school system is going to be the future. Okay? And so if we have more three-year-olds in the schools, where are they going to go? And so right now, you have some pre-K school, classes at, I think, three elementary schools, plus you've got Hutcheson. And there are pros and cons for putting them in the elementary schools, and there are pros and cons to having separate early childhood education schools, right? It's just something we need to talk about. And I put some information here from, as a John Friedman study. And, and we're thinking about poverty in our school system, but if we can get, if we can get more kids into an early learning education environment, whether it's parents doing it on their own, or it's public, I don't want to get into that debatement. But, I mean, to, to think that they will have a better likelihood of going to college, they're going to earn more money, less likely to be a single parent, more likely to save for retirement, and be less of a burden on, on the public down the road, I mean, my gosh, what else would you want to do? I mean, it, it just seems like it's pretty obvious to me. So with that, Jacob and I will kind of open it up for questions, and go from there. Once again, we're not going to have all the answers that you may have, but that's where we are.
First of all, we want to thank you for this very comprehensive, we've been looking forward to this report, and with even more anticipation, we're looking forward to the findings. And so, board members, any questions? Dr. Edwards, any comments that you would like to make?
I would like to just say thank you, too, for the in-depth study. And similar to our, our data presentation, sometimes we hear some things that just make your jaw drop and make you wonder. And, and in here, it was a very honest, straightforward assessment of where we are right now. And that's our motto this year. Where are we right now in terms of what we're experiencing with our students, staff, and our facility? So I do appreciate you just bringing it all to us, so that we can start from here. And I will definitely work with you to get a committee together. I've been waiting for this data, so that's great. And I'm sure I'm looking out, I see some of my staff right now, who are probably eager and excited to participate as well. So looking forward to staff participation.
Members of the board, any questions that you would like to raise? Turn to Troy.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Smith, Mr. Caldwell, thank you. Outstanding presentation. Appreciate your work. Couple questions for you. Jacob, did you assess whether, have you used the geographic information system to assess where the students are coming from to attend the schools?
That's part of the demographic study.
Okay.
We were waiting to get the follow-up membership stuff, which has, it doesn't have a student name, but it has their, has their student ID and their location, that pertinent information. So that's all been sent to our demographic person, and they're using the city GIS. They use the same software to kind of do their work.
And then superimposed upon that data, for whatever it's worth, and it may be very little, is there any way you can assign, I mean, obviously, that information you're looking at is looking at, okay, where can we maybe potentially change enrollment at schools, I'm guessing? Is there any way to superimpose a transportation cost on that? For instance, okay, now we're going to have a, a bus route that used to be three miles, it's going to be eight miles. And it may be insignificant. If it's insignificant, then obviously, we don't need to study that. If the transportation cost is so minimal, who cares? But I'm just curious, I don't know, number one, if that would be insignificant, and number two, is there a way to superimpose that additional cost if we modify or where the students are going to attend schools? Just, just to throw it out there.
Right. So, I'm going to talk a little bit of ignorance, but my understanding is, the transportation has a software package they use to kind of manage their, their routes, okay? That's a diff, I think it's a different system than the GIS. That's my understanding.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a different system, but Steve, I would, I want to know if, I want to know if the, what we're looking at is, you know, saving costs, obviously, I am anyway, and improving the utilization of the schools. Part of that is going to be, okay, if there's additional transportation costs associated with taking, you know, Johnny from this school to that school, are we able to capture that? And if you tell me it's so insignificant, relatively speaking, a small percentage, that I don't care. But I don't, I don't know those, those answers. And I wonder if there's an easy way to get to it, and then can it be superimposed on any redistribution of children that we may be looking at? That's all.
I don't know whether it would be insignificant or not either, at this point, and to tell you the truth. That question never even came up yet. But just knowing enough about transportation, of how we route, and where these buses are going, my guess is that there would be some, some savings there, by consolidating attendance zones and whatever. Because as, as Blair pointed out, we have buses running from one side of town to the other side of town, and that's happening every day, twice a day. And so I, I would say that, so we will have to look at that. That's, that's one.
Thank you. The 3D renderings, I mean, so these are all, you, you guys have created CAD, CAD 3D renderings of every school?
These are 3D, mainly for floor plan. I mean, we don't take the time to draw the roof and get that kind of thing accurately, but mainly for square footages and looking at volumes of rooms for MEP.
Interior, interior, obviously, which is all I care about. So I'm wondering if we can utilize, I mean, so these, we're going to have interior CAD files of every room in every school. Is that true?
That's correct. Floor plan, yes.
Okay. That can be useful lots of things. All right, very good.
And I think at one, one, one school had asked about, and it's always the, you are here, or how to get out of the classroom type things. A lot of those are just kind of in block format. We are going to share those with those schools, so that they can have a very clear picture of how to get out of the school for visitors, for students, and that kind of thing. So there's multiple benefits to having these floor plans.
And are you going to utilize the 3D renderings to help optimization, to help, as an input parameter, optimization of the facility, primarily classroom optimization?
I mean, we're going to use them, is this going to be a tool that we can then kind of make our recommendations from?
Sure.
It's the simplest thing. I would throw out this 3D part, everything we draw is in 3D. But it'll be a planned view, but if we wanted to make a classroom larger, we could literally move a wall from here to here, and it recalculates things, so.
Great. You talked about elementary school rankings. What do you mean by that?
So what we've done is, Jacob's focus has been on the condition of the buildings from an architectural standpoint. I've been looking at the educational programming piece. Southern Air's been looking at the mechanical, electrical, plumbing pieces. And Hurt and Profit has been looking at the sites. All four of those groups or individuals are giving rankings for their particular area. And so they're grading them out, and then we will take and create an average for the condition of the school. And so you'll be able to see a spreadsheet of, of the elementary schools, and how good the electrical system is there, and the educational programming, and then what the average for the school is, so that we can objectively kind of rank them in terms of the condition. So I can tell you, Sheffield's going to be your, your highest-ranked school, elementary school. I can tell you that right now, because it was the most recent one that was renovated. It was also a full renovation. The second chart that Jacob showed you on the existing conditions were the mechanical, electrical systems. I mean, it was just the mechanical systems from Linkhorn. Linkhorn has, the, the heating-air conditioning systems in that school, the worst elementary school you got. And that's the reason all of that was in orange and red. So it's kind of a way of objectively kind of grading the schools to see where they fall from a condition standpoint.
Okay, and that's an actual facilities ranking, correct?
That's correct.
Will you be able to give me a utilization ranking in terms of,
Yeah.
we have this many students?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, associated with that, are you going to be able to provide us a, an overhead? Basically, what's the cost of keeping this building open? Not personnel costs in terms of teachers and teaching staff, but, you know, elementary, you know, this elementary school has a very, is very expensive to just keep the doors open, because maybe it doesn't have proper insulation, you know, who knows what is? But basically, keep the doors open, overhead, overhead cost ranking of these different schools.
Right. So Southern Air, they haven't done it yet, will be looking at all of the utility bills, whether it's water, gas, power. And so we'll have an understanding, and then you can kind of work it out on a square-footage basis.
Right.
Determine it by the number of kids. I mean, it's all different ways you could kind of come up with a multiple. But, yeah, we'll be able to rank those schools in terms of how much of an energy hog they are.
And you're, you have a good, perfect segue, because really, I want to know, what is the overhead of cost associated per school for each facility? If it costs, you know, a hundred dollars a day for this elementary school, just the overhead cost per student, but this one's $50 a day, you know, I want to know that, because that's going to help with some of our, not only utilization, but if we do consolidation or divestiture of the schools, correct? Okay.
And so the other, other challenge you have is, you have like a school, like, you know, we talk about utilization. RS Payne was designed as a junior high school, and you're using it as an elementary school. And the two just don't jive, okay? And so it, it has a lot of wasted space in it, to be perfectly honest with you. It's also going to be a hundred years old in a few years. And so, you know, all, all those things, there's a whole series of things we're going to have to take into account when we start talking about priorities down the road, in terms of energy usage, all, all those things come into play.
And what I'm asking is, hopefully, we have a report from you that takes some of that potentially subjective factors, and to the point that we can make objective rankings, is what we want, we're after, and I'm sure, I mean, that's your business.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I got two more. One, one, all right. No, that wasn't, that was just a comment for myself. Actually, that's it. My last question was over. I appreciate, again, very good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. If we need to, we can come back to you, Ms. Morrison.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I assume that you're also evaluating our sites for alternative education? We have several places. You're not?
That's not part of our scope of work. We talked about that, possibly adding that down the road, but like Ford Hill, you know, Pride Center, none of those, none of those auxiliary sites, this building is not included in that. If that's something you want us to do, we certainly can. And I think, one of, one of the things we ran across, so at Sheffield, at one point in time, there were trailers added out there because of the enrollment. And those trailers that are out there no longer are part of the school, they are an alternative program. Those trailers need to be replaced, first of all, but where do you put that? And that's a piece of the information that I think at some point in time, as we think about big picture, how are we going to rebuild this puzzle, that we're going to need some of that information. The other thing that we found, and I didn't address this, is, you know, you've had some issues in this building. and so, you have some central staff that would be here that are in your schools now. And so, in an ideal world, I would assume you'd want them back here, in the ideal world, but I don't know that. But that's another thing we uncovered.
I just think that with our focus on student suspension and expulsions and finding alternative education for, to meet needs, that's a big part of what we need to look at, whether we move it to schools or, or expand our programs. I just think it's important.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison, for noting that. Madam Clerk, if you could please note that, and whatever the scope is, we may have to rethink that, because I know we have been having ongoing challenges, and that's a very vital part of what we do and need to do going forward. Other board members that would have a question or comment to make? Ms. Harvey.
Thank you, Blair, Jacob. I appreciate your presentation, very, very thorough, very complete. My question would be for you, and this might be something that's outside of your scope, is, as part of your recommendations, will there be a, a master plan, so to speak, from your recommendations? Or is it really going to be more of a, sort of a narrative, just digesting the data that's been, that's been sort of crunched? Or is there going to be, you know, master planning?
Yeah, so I, I think, yeah, we're going to come back with recommendations, but I think the recommendations are going to be tied to what happens with the attendance zone at the elementary schools. So, we can do this, we can do that, we can do this. And depending on each one of those options, you may have different scenarios. Well, you need to build a new elementary school here, or if you put an addition on this school, that would take care, that's going to have to come out of that, so that we can do cost estimates.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, we'll probably have three options, and it may include, you know, attendance zones, and then the potential major construction work that would come out of that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
No, you provided a sort of a scary scenario for me, all these buildings are falling apart. When do you expect the solution to come to the school board?
So I, I mentioned that probably demographics, we probably, it'll be the end of the year before we get that final report from them. Our goal is to kind of get through our initial evaluations. But the reality is, is, once we get to Thanksgiving, it's going to be hard to do anything, because staff is not here, schools are shut down, Jacob wants to go home and be with his family, I have no idea why. He doesn't want to work on Saturdays and Sundays, I just, I don't understand, but anyway. I think it's going to be the end of the year, kind of getting our initial evaluations done. Then we'll be moving into the next phase, which is really the recommendations. And just depending on how quickly we can get, you know, meetings scheduled and start those, those evaluations. We had hoped to have a final report back to you in January, and make a presentation in January. It's just, it's been so slow going, you know, with school opening and then things like that, it's just been kind of hard to kind of move forward. I think probably a reality is probably going to be closer to March, before we have something back to you that you can really digest.
You may continue, Dr. Gupta.
So, you pointed out that some of these elementary schools don't even have hot water.
They don't have hot water to some of the classrooms. Most classrooms in the elementary schools do not have hot water. So it's kind of interesting that we're in this COVID world, and you don't have hot water.
How many schools did you find?
I would say the majority, I don't, I don't have a, I don't, I don't know if it's seven, eight of the 11, I don't know. I'd have to go back and look at our numbers.
Back when these buildings were designed and built, hot water was not put into them. They were not designed with hot water going to the classrooms. Over the years, we have added hot water, using instantaneous heaters and, and things of that nature. So, a lot of the, a lot of the classrooms have them in there, but as Blair pointed out, many still do not.
And just so we're clear, these are the sinks within the, I think kindergarten, maybe first grade classroom. This is not to the school as a whole, so this is a very limited number of facilities.
I think another big question is, what do you want to do with kitchens? How do you, which, and that's where you want to meet with Beth, is how do you, how do you want to provide food, especially at the elementary school level, is it shipped in, or is it a full-blown kitchen? And that has implications too, because a good example of that is Bad, oh no, is Bedford Hills, where the kitchen was removed, you know, food is kind of brought in via satellite, or either they're just warming things there, and that kitchen area is being used as academic space now. So, it's just a host of things.
Beth questions, yet, Dr. Gupta.
So, some of your HVAC system, as per your report, is almost to its final stages of funeral. So in your report, I'm assuming that's an unsafe space for the kids to have when the air ventilation systems are in poor shape. Am I?
Right, so Steve's going to talk to you a little bit later about capital improvement stuff, and there's some CARES money for looking at heating and ventilation systems, so. I mean, yeah, I mean, there's, y'all have made some changes, I mean, there's some things that you can add on to the existing systems to, to kind of kill the, the virus, which y'all have been doing. But yeah, overall, big changes. And the one things I'll caution you about is, I mean, that chart that Jacob showed you, that, you know, how many of these schools are at least 50 years old, and frankly, the renovations are getting past, getting close to that 30-year mark? So, you have Payne Elementary School, which was renovated in the 1980s. When I first started working, it was being renovated. Those systems are ready for replacement now. But I don't want you to waste money just to replace the system, are you replacing them in Khan? Are you putting in a more efficient system back in its place? Or, you know, what's, what's the, the long-term view there? You know, if you keep that school, it really needs to be reconfigured on the inside. So, it's, it's hard, it's just not easy to say, just go put the new mechanical system in there.
All right, now, this is huge, and we all know it, and it's so important. So, I want to just ask, Dr. Senha, is there anything you want to ask or state at this time? Dr. Carter?
I just want clarification, there is hot water in the restrooms.
Yes.
Okay, just one minute, I don't, so we don't have to get emails regarding that. The other thing is, a lot of times, we continue to struggle with the fact that we question whether or not we should go ahead with the gym, or whether we should go ahead with HVAC's updates. And then, we don't know for sure whether or not we're going to receive funding for a new school. So if we didn't put things in place, and sometimes you say, well, that could be a waste of money, but if you don't do it, then the study gets kicked down, or the new school, as you've already pointed out, we know, gets delayed, 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 and we can't just keep a chiller that's not functioning in there. So you have to, you, you know, sometimes it's five or $600,000, half a million or more. So we've really struggled with that too. How to look at that, whether, can we continue to wait to put things in to a school when there may not be an existence, or we may need to renovate, or, or should we go ahead and do that? So that's some of our struggles, but thank you, wonderful presentation, very honest.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Brennan, did you?
No, thank you, sir.
All right, so, Dr. Edwards, I think you shared a little bit about maybe a committee, you're going to work on that. I thank Mr. Gasky, and of course, your, your presentation today has helped us to appreciate some of a ti, somewhat of a timeline. And we are trying to be good partners with City Council appropriating body. So I think we've received a wonderful report tonight, and we're just, each of us do our due diligence to make sure that we get this report and move forward in the best way to deliver public education going forward. And so, I, I want to give you all a hand for bringing this to us tonight. For Dr. Edwards, any further comments?
No, but I do want to just remind the board that this facility study is part of our strategic plan and what we had in our plan, as well as meeting parts of the requirement for standard six. There was a lot of conversation about our obligation with that, in terms of looking at enrollment and demographics. So I do appreciate that you all did a very thorough study of everything, so that we can move forward and make some decisions about the education. And I also want to just say, on behalf of the staff that are here and the staff that are watching, I think they salute you, because what you have shared today is, are the conditions and facilities that they live in every day. And to some degree, while we may not like to see some of those things, it is comforting to have acknowledgement that, yes, the building is almost 100 years old. And yes, the HVA system does need to, to be repaired. And as much as we stay focused on the financial cost of what, you know, renovating buildings and making decisions, let's also remember that we're in the business of people. So sometimes, people need to be weighed in along with what's financially best. We don't always want to make decisions that are just financially efficient. Our students deserve a wonderful learning environment. Our staff deserve working conditions and wonderful places to come every day. It will help with the marketing and making Lynchburg City Schools the employer of choice. So, as this board does its work, I'm going to hold us all accountable to, yes, we are looking at the bottom line of dollar, but our real bottom line is our staff, our students, and our families, and what they deserve in terms of quality educational facilities. And let's keep that in front of us as we make decisions going forward.
And I will close with the, your principals, staff, and the, and the teachers have been great. I mean, they've been very willing to share, and, you know, kudos to your custodial staff, because they've been, they've been great.
Well, well said, Dr. Edwards. I do want to just say, in closing, one of our board members, Dr. Nellis, is not here tonight, but I'm sure if he has any comments or thoughts, he will email them, and so that you can have his reflections and thoughts as well. And then, I know Dr. Senha and the full board, that we'll be keeping a close eye at what's happening at the state level with modernization efforts and other kinds of supports that may be available to us. So thank you all very much, and the work continues. All right, that now moves us, our board, to our next section of our meeting for tonight, which is E, public comment. And we do want to acknowledge tonight that we are somewhat operating under the realities of our COVID dynamics, but at the same time, we're proceeding as we have gone forward. And so, tonight, we do have three persons that have signed in, and we do have one written comment that has been given, then Dr. Carter will be reading that for us tonight. And so, I think that the best way to proceed is to let those who are in person go first, and then Dr. Carter will read our public comment that is in writing, and we have no phone situations tonight. And so, persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office, or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures. Make comments about a public official or employee that are not related to their official duties. Engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. Told allotted time for public comments at school board meetings, it's 30 minutes. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. We welcome now for public comments tonight, hope I have this right, Dara Hill, which is addressing the quarantine policy.
Hi, my name is Dara Hill. I'm a parent of a freshman and a senior at EC Glass. I've also worked in the past as a teacher for Lynchburg City Schools for six years. I mention this because I've never felt the need so obvious that I needed to speak with you all tonight, for the first time. I'm not a doctor, but an English teacher, so instead, I'll quote Mark Twain. There are three kinds of lies, lies, damned lies, and statistics. I could stand up here and quote multiple articles and studies I've read, but I know that will fall on deaf ears. I'm sure you also have articles and studies you prefer to quote. Instead, I'll state what should be the obvious. You all are in the business of education, not healthcare. Your job is to teach children curriculum, to get children in school, not out. Let me give you a snippet of what's happening under your noses, for the sake of health. My son has played football for EC Glass for four years, not to mention, three years at Dunbar. Last Friday night, he was supposed to be honored before the game for senior night. Instead, he had to quarantine due to being exposed in a class. It didn't matter that my son was wearing a mask, it didn't matter that he was in school two full days after exposure before finding out, it didn't matter that my son had two negative COVID tests, and he even got his antibodies retested on the day, first day of his quarantine. He's positive for COVID antibodies, meaning he's got natural immunity, still. But because I chose not to get him vaccinated, he was required to miss three days of school and his senior night football game. By the way, he would have been allowed to return to school Saturday morning, if there was school on Saturday. So, within a few inches and a few hours, it kept him from such an important part in his life, such an important night in his life. In this same situation, a student who was vaccinated wouldn't have had to miss one day or event. It doesn't matter that we all know, and is stated on the CDC guidelines, that people with vaccinations still get and give COVID. Yet they don't even have to provide a negative test. So here we are, in 2001, still segregating students. I was told by the Director of Student Services that they were doing this for the sake of health. There is so much more that goes into the health of every child, including their mental health. And for you to not consider the whole child, to not apply best practices, you're failing him and many others like him. I hope you don't hear this and think it's out of your control, you're following VDH, which is what I continually hear every day in my job currently as a teacher. My question is, has our school system lost all autonomy? Are you not able to make any considerations for the individual student? What can you do to change these nonsensical rules? I'm doing my part by speaking tonight, or at least trying to get my point across by speaking to the principal and the superintendent. Will you do your part? And if you continue to sit by and let unscientific rules continue to do, destroy Lynchburg City Schools, then please remove your slogan from your websites and your paraphernalia, every child, by name and by need, to graduation, because it's false advert, false advertising. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hill, for coming and bringing your comments to us tonight. Our next speaker will be Aaron Reed, who is going to talk to us about collective bargaining, representing the Lynchburg Education Association.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Reed, and I am a graduate of Lynchburg City Schools and a veteran teacher of 24 years. And tonight, I come to you representing the Lynchburg Education Association. It is appropriate tonight, as we experience the changing seasons outside, that we talk about the changing educational landscape inside. For almost half a century, the state of Virginia has forbid localities from engaging in the act of collective bargaining with their employees. This represented a sizable obstacle to you, having an important partner at the table when making important decisions. But in the past two years, the winds of change have swept away those old and inflexible laws governing bargaining. So tonight, we come to you, seeking to forge a new and more meaningful relationship, one that provides you with the most critical voice of all, your professional, dedicated, and hardworking employees. In short, we seek to enter into an agreement that enables us to collectively bargain with you. Now, the ramifications of what I have just proposed, and the ripples of opinion throughout our community, indeed, outside that door right now, are not things you and I can control. All that we can seek to do is be as clear, honest, and genuine with each other as possible. So in the hopes of earning your respect, and your trust, and your agreement, I come to you tonight with this proposition. Because the truth is, you know me, each of you. I have taught your children, your nieces, I have been a teacher under your administrative care. I have engaged with you by email and conversation on a variety of topics. You know me, so hear me now. While we can get rid of all the weight of the old dialog surrounding collective bargaining in the past, I, we, seek to help you make the best possible decision in the most challenging of times. Because the truth is that the challenges will not evaporate as we emerge from this pandemic. Constructing the best calendar that prioritizes student learning and staff collaboration, setting fair and competitive pay schedules for employees, determining productive staff development. These are all ongoing challenges for this division, and a bargaining partner would be ideally suited to help you navigate those things. The truth is that too many assumptions about collective bargaining are born from hearsay and ignorance. Voices that have an ideological interest in resisting the employee's voice will whisper to you. to you that collective bargaining is nothing but a pathway to dangerous capitulation. The meeting that some of you are attending next month on December 7th will seek to do just that. So I'm here tonight to clarify, as a teacher is often asked to do, what collective bargaining can mean for you and the community here in Lynchburg. The power to collectively bargain simply means that those employees, secretaries, and bus drivers, and cafeteria workers, and instructional aides, and more, will have an organizational unit that can speak on their behalf on all the issues that affect their professional life. Why would you wish this? Because when your employees can help set the conversation around benefits, around safety conditions in schools, and more, will your entire problem-solving mechanism get stronger? As you consider the challenges of education in the 21st century, you can go through solutions, knowing that your employees have already contributed to the process. In fact, the solution is likely their idea, because those are the people in the classrooms, at the front desk, and they know those problems best. Now, you're going to hear a lot from other voices on this subject, and that's a good thing. The LEA welcomes parents and the greater Lynchburg community to be engaged in the best practices for students in this city. Because this proposal is the dawn of a fantastic new day, a time for leaders and staff to come together for the future of city schools. Thank you for letting me speak to you today.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, for your comments tonight. We appreciate it. And our last speaker that we have for public comments tonight in person is Andrew Glover, who wants to talk to us tonight about equity representing conservative parents of Lynchburg.
Good evening, Lynchburg City School Board. My name is Andrew Glover, and tonight I represent the conservative parents of Lynchburg, a group of nearly 350 concerned parents and caregivers in the Lynchburg community. Last night, Lynchburg City participated in a monumental election process, where a majority of Lynchburg residents voted to change, voted for a change in leadership that values parents' participation in their children's education, which exit polls showed was the single largest issue in this race. While I understand that you, the Lynchburg City School Board, are above elections and have no accountability to anyone in this room, I pray that you reflect deeply on the clear direction that citizens of Lynchburg showed that you, that we want to go. Our concerns are not a manufactured crisis, as some in this room have stated, but are real, legitimate concerns that are shared by a large majority in this community. Over the last two years, our group has come before you trying to help present solutions, all of which have been ignored. However, in the spirit of continually seeking positive change, I am here to once again present a positive solution that will help our school grow stronger. Over the last few weeks, I've sent several of you emails requesting that the Lynchburg City School Board clarify your position on equity training and teaching. Now, we are not seeking to get into a fight on what is critical race theory, or if critical race theory is taught in schools, but rather requesting that you all take a stand on what is and is not appropriate in our school system. As such, I have here a draft resolution for the clarity of equity training and teaching. It reads this. Now therefore, let it be resolved that any school, school-based program, activity, or entity that is operated, controlled, paid for, or under the jurisdiction of the school board shall refrain, shall refrain from training, teaching, or promoting the following to students and employees. One, that any race is inherently or superior or inferior to any other race. Two, that any individual by virtue of his or her race or skin color is inherently racist, biased, privileged, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously. That, three, that any individual by virtue of his race or skin color bears the responsibilities for the actions committed by other members of his race, skin color, or religion. Four, an individual's moral character or worth is determined by his or her own skin color. Five, that the United States is a fundamentally and inherently racist country. Six, that capitalism is racist. And seven, no book dividing people or race and, no books dividing people by race and scapegoating them should ever be used in the schools or in teacher training and educational evaluations. Let it therefore be resolved that material promoting unity and understanding and equal opportunity should be promoted. And finally, let it be resolved that any violation to the above-mentioned be reported to the Chair of the School Board or their designated needs through the applicable policies, regulations, and procedures for resolving complaints by parents, students, or staff. Individuals reporting any such violation will not be retaliated against. That's the end of the resolution. That's it. That's the entire resolution that we are seeking for the school board to commit to. Not one mention of critical race theory, and written in plain, simple English with clear definitions and expectations. The Lynchburg community wants change. That change requires your action, not your inaction. The ball is now in your court, and I urge you to take up this resolution. Otherwise, your silence will speak louder than your words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Appreciate your comments tonight. Thank all three of the persons who in person gave your comments to us tonight very clearly. We have one written comment that will be read now by Vice Chair Dr. Carter.
And this is from Jeffrey Wooters, supporting teachers. Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Wooters. I am a senior at EC Glass High School and a Central Virginia Governor's School. As I write this message on Wednesday morning, I can't help but worry about the future of our schools. We are living through deeply divided times, and the quality of Lynchburg public education is at stake. As our teachers increasingly come under attack from conservative interests, and possibly from the state government, it is important, it is important than ever to support our teachers. They are the backbone of our schools and the ones ensuring a good future for our students. But we can and must and do better, we can and must do better to ensure that the quality of Lynchburg education remains high, and we attract and retain the best teachers in the region. To that end, I believe there are two areas in the Lynchburg City School, in which Lynchburg City Schools has to do better. The first is the COVID mitigation. I continue to be happy to report that mask compliance is excellent at EC Glass. Despite the ongoing inexplicable community backlash to masking, students at Glass cheerfully wear their masks correctly, and for long periods of time, without any issues. Despite the saber rattlings by some, Glass students have no issues and suffer no ill side effects from masking. However, we can still do more. The Pfizer vaccine is now approved for children ages five and up. Therefore, there is now no reason not to require vaccines for all LCS students and staff. This is the best way to keep our students, families, and teachers safe. However, COVID is not the only problem faces, facing our schools. We are facing a teacher crisis in the United States, and indeed, in Lynchburg. Teachers are already criminally underpaid, overworked, and overstressed. These problems have often, these problems have only gotten worse since COVID began. Lynchburg City School pays our teachers a lot of lip service in this regard, telling them how valuable they are, and how much they are appreciated. However, there has been no material change to make the lives of teachers better. This school board and Lynchburg City Schools must listen to the demands of teachers. Most importantly, we must increase teacher pay to be both livable and competitive. We also must listen to the Lynchburg Education Association, whose ideals and goals to support teachers are worth supporting. I am behind the LEA 100%. I am so thankful for my teachers, and I want the best for them possible. Members of the school board urge you to do even better for your teachers, but especially for your students whose, whose interests you serve.
Thank you, Wooten, for the written public comment. This concludes our public comments section for tonight, and again, please know in the public that your comments are valuable, and we appreciate them. Members of the board, I would like us to get through the consent agenda, if possible, before we take a little break, and I think we can accomplish that. We'll move now to Section F, our student representative comments, and we are always delighted to have representatives to share. I know it's been a little lengthy getting to you tonight, and we do apologize for that. But first, we have Eugene Kim from Heritage High School, followed by Jaden Scott from EC Glass High School.
My name is Eugene Kim, and I am a senior at Heritage High School and Central Virginia Governor's School. This is my second time speaking to everyone, and once again, it is such an honor to be here, so thank you. At Heritage High School, we always start off with our motto, "We are pioneers." And the "We are" is an acronym that stands for welcoming, encouraging, achieving, responsible, and engaged. This is just a brief overview of what a day-to-day schedule at Heritage looks like. Heritage is now on a block schedule, A-days versus B-days. On A-days, we attend periods one through four in 90-minute blocks, and on B-days, we attend periods five through eight in 90-minute blocks. And this is so that the amount of traffic in the hallways during transition periods are decreased, and that's part of the COVID-19 regulations at Heritage. It also results in more instructional time in classrooms. Now, for this meeting, I sent out a Google Form asking for students' opinions to the student body at Heritage, and I received many responses, and I'm going to include many more responses in the legislative meeting on Friday, but I wanted to do a brief overview today. Some questions I asked the students were, "What do you like most about the current school year?" And some students said that they liked the A-days and B-days, they liked the football games, and I will discuss our football team later. And they also liked how our teachers are putting their effort and dedication into every day, which I'm sure is felt every day. And other students said they did not like the scheduling of, the block schedules, like A-days to B-days, they didn't really like that. And they didn't like the COVID regulations we had in place, they did not like the masks, and they didn't like the E-hall passes and the E-hall policy that we have at Heritage now. Other students did say that they appreciate the regulations in place, so the answer had, the answers had a very wide range. So these few that I've picked over here, they're not a very active example if you take into account that there are many more answers. And other, other students mentioned that they did not like the scheduling in general, for example, the lunch scheduling. Some students felt that they could be a bit longer. So, once again, a wide range of answers. Some upcoming dates, starting next week, every Wednesday, excluding the Thanksgiving and winter breaks, of, on, up until January 12th, every Wednesday, there will be a two-hour earlier release for LCS students. I know a lot of seniors can relate to this. We are in the middle of college application season, and we're actually in the middle of college, of just a prime month. And the beacon of hope at Heritage is always open and welcoming to any students who have any questions about college or just about school in general. And some important dates coming up are onsite admissions during the Virginia College Application Week, which is on November 17th. And just a side note, many of the colleges, their early action deadlines, excuse me, passed on November 1st. Moving on to our extracurriculars, the Heritage High School Environmental Club has been hard at work. Their first club meeting was on October 7th, and their first volunteer opportunity was on October 23rd, and this was organized through the Lynchburg Parks and Recreation. This was actually a joint effort with the EC Glass Environment Action Club. In this picture over here, there are members of the Heritage High School Environmental Club and of the EC Glass Club. And we picked up trash, painted benches, and clean bleachers at Pixie Park, and it was an amazing experience. And another project that the Environmental Club is working on is the Pollinator Garden Project, and I will make sure to update everyone in future meetings. Pioneer Theater, so the Pioneer Theater, the Pioneer Theater has been working very hard and performing the Fantastics throughout October, and now they're moving on to this year's competition piece called The Lost Girl, and they'll perform this on Thursday at 7:00 PM in the Heritage High School Auditorium. And I mentioned this in my last presentation, but the Heritage High School Literary Magazine is continuing to accept submissions, and if you want, if you're a Heritage student and want to submit something, please email it to this email address. Our topic is culture, and there are multiple weekly topics. Moving on to our homecoming game, the homecoming game was the culmination of our Spirit Week, and it was on October 22nd, Heritage versus Jefferson Forest, and Heritage won 61 to 8. Congratulations to all their members of our Homecoming Court and our homecoming queen and king, Asia Preston and Kenneth Dees Crawford. Now, this is the Spirit Week, and it was during the week, October 18th through the 22nd, students were asked to show their school pride through themed days. So for example, Mondays were, Monday was sweats and crazy socks. Tuesdays, students could bring their school stuff in anything but a backpack. And on Wednesday, it was squad day. Thursday was Halloween rehearsal day, as you can see here. And Friday was pink out, and Friday was our homecoming game. Moving on to our athletics. Heritage High School volleyball had their senior night on October 19th, and their last game on October 21st. Congratulations to all our volleyball players. Football has been having an amazing season this year. They, JV, won against JS 62 to 7 on October 25th, and varsity won against Liberty 55 to 7 on the 29th of October. Some upcoming games, if you're interested. This Friday, varsity is playing Amherst at a home game at 7:00 PM. And next Monday, JV is playing Russburg at an away game at 6:30 PM. Our cross-country team had their regional meet yesterday, and just congratulations to all our runners, we really appreciate how hard you worked during the season. Last but not least, our cheerleaders, they did a great, they had a great competition on October 23rd, and they placed in top five at regionals, so great job to them. That's it from me. Thank you so much for listening, and I will see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eugene. That was very good. Thank you. All right, Jaden.
I am about to share my screen now. All right, so to start off, I just want to say hi. Thank you all for having me. I'm so happy to be here. And I want to start today's presentation with Unity Day, and this was a day that was dedicated to show our support and our stance on bullying. And we do want to just reiterate that Glass is a safe space. We want this to be a place where students feel included, where they feel accepted. And so we all wore orange to show our stance and our pride for this, and so we were just really happy with our turnout. We had a banner made, teachers and students both participated. And then campus beautification, this was done on October 16th, and so we had a lot of students come out to give back to the community, to give back to our school, and kind of spruce everything up. We relayed some mulch, we picked up trash, pulled tree limbs down, and it was just a really good experience. And so I do want to thank all of the students that came out. We had representatives from SCA, from National Honor Society, from the Environmental Action Club, Key Club, we had sports teams there, we had basketball and track, so, and if I'm missing anybody, thank you as well. So we just want to say thank you to everybody, as well as our faculty who came out, too. And then for cultural arts, we're going to start with the Glass Theater. We're celebrating 40 years of excellence this year, and so we started out with I Hate Hamlet, which opened on October 21st, and this show was directed by ECG alum, Mr. Jim Ackley. And then our show also featured and highlighted a lot of EC Glass alumni as well, whether they were in the play or where they were backstage doing technical things, and we also had our current students there as well. And then for band and orchestra, I thought it was really important to point them out because they, well, our marching band, has been named the grand champions of the Glenbar High School Celtic Classic this past month, and they swept all awards in all captions from and they swept all awards in all captions from the Class II A Band. So, congratulations to all of you all. What an amazing job you have done. And on to athletics, football. Both our JV and varsity football teams are having a great season. Currently have a record of 8 to 1, and the varsity team has its last regular season game this Friday at LCA. And then, as for volleyball, our varsity team has moved on to the first round of regionals. And last night, they hosted Amherst County High School. And as a little update, we did win, so we're now moving on to the next place. And also, at that game, I wasn't aware when I was making this, but I wish I was, so I could have added it. Erin Johnson, she is on our varsity team, and she has reached her 1,000th assist last night. So, I do want to give a great big shout out to her. That is amazing. And then, also moving on to National Principals Month. I do want to take the time out to say that we appreciate all of our principals, all of our administration. We could not be where we are today without them. We do know that there is no school without a principal, so we do want to thank each and every one of them. And to show our thanks for them, our culinary arts team, they came in and made a meal for them. And I included a picture down here at the bottom. It looks really good, y'all. They came in, made a meal, and were able to do administrative dinner. So, we do want to say thank you to them. And while we're giving out congratulations and thank yous, I also do want to recognize our toppers students. The first quarter has just wrapped up. We just finished that. And so, with that being said, I want to say congratulations to the 1,172 students that earned a total of 5,701 As and/or Bs. I do want to say, that's amazing. We are coming back from such rough times, and this is a new transition for us. So, during this period, just to see so much positivity going on, I am super proud about that. So, congratulations to all the toppers. Keep up the amazing work. And I thought that would be the great way to end everything and end on a high note. So, thank you all so much for your time, and I will see you next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These claps represent the approval and appreciation of the board. Thank you, Eugen and Jaden, for outstanding information that you shared to us. We're very appreciative, and to both principals, we want to encourage you that we are thankful for the work that you're doing and your staffs. We do want to acknowledge that I believe both of them, Madam Clerk, will be attending the Student Rep Session of the SBA this year. We're very proud of that. So, let's give them a hand. That's the first. All right.
Fantastic.
Thanks, everybody, for your hard work and encouragement. All right. At this time, we will now move to, if we could, unless y'all want to go now. I was going to try to get us through the consent agenda. Can we do that? The financial report, Dr. Edwards.
Okay. Ms. LaConne, if you are ready to be teed up for the financial report, we will turn it over to you.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting the financial report through September 30th. Our adopted budget has increased. We have increased it due to two items. The first being, we have our prior year open POs. And the second is the addition of us recognizing the value of the donation from the Virginia Education Foundation of those books. So, we have to have those on our record as both in expenditure and our revenue. So, our adjusted budget has increased. Our revenue received to date, we have received 19.08%. And we have provided a detailed report of the revenue, as well as the expenditures to date. We have spent 19.27%. We also have the expenditure detail. Our expenditures included the encumbrances. And just as a reminder, the encumbrances are our current year open POs and also our obligated contracted payrolls is making up a spending 80.66%. So, again, I have detailed reports if you have any questions.
Ms. Conne, just shared. Board members, any questions for the financial report? Dr. Gupta, go right ahead.
Ms. LaConne, just curious, the revenue received to date is 19.08, and the expense is 19.27. So, where do we get money to pay off? Is it to dip into a reserve fund, or is it just?
We still have fund balance return, and we still have, it's one account at the city, so we have multiple funds. And then, the city will give us the appropriation as needed. So, it does look a little strange when you see that. Also, when you think about the prior year encumbrances, those are funds that were held out of the prior year. So, the 19.08% is what we received as this year's funding. So, there is funds that were left over from the prior year.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Any other questions for Ms. LaConne's financial report? All right, thank you so much, Ms. LaConne, for that report. And that will move us to Section H for the consent agenda. And I do want to acknowledge that you have before you tonight each of the items for the consent agenda, and some of which we wanted to be on from last meeting. And so, H1, School Board Meeting Minutes from October the 5th. H2, School Board Work Session Minutes, October the 19th. H3, the Fiscal Agent Authorization for the 2021-2022 Budget, Ms. LaConne. H4, our Human Resource Report. H5, Human Resource Report Addendum, November 1st. And H6, Instruction and Program Policy Updates. And then, H7, Operation Policy Updates. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion being made by Dr. Brennan, seconded by Dr. Carter. Any further questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
School Board Member Trost.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
School Board, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Sinha.
Yes.
School Board Member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
School Board Member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
All right, if we could take about a six or seven-minute break, and then we'll come right back. All right.
I apologize.
Audience, we will now move on with our school board meeting and we will now move into section I, School Board Member Reports. And the first report would be from our Finance Committee and Facilities, Finance Committee and Facilities Committee Chair. And Dr. Nillis is not here, but someone who was at that meeting. Is there anything to report? All right, thank you so much. I two, the Governor's School Committee, Dr. Gupta.
We canceled the November meeting, so I don't have anything to report.
Thank you so much. I three, the Law Regional School Committee, Dr. Carter.
The next meeting will be somewhere before 10:00.
All right.
The law's building.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. The STEM Academy, Dr. Nillis is not here tonight. And now we will move to I five. We've had the law and with STEM Committee, Dr. Nillis is not here, so Legislative Advocacy and Community Relations Committee Chair, Dr. Sinha.
Well, things are rolling to get ready for our breakfast with the legislators Friday morning, starting at nine. Most everybody has gotten in touch with me regarding their three minutes to shine, including our student representatives, who are putting together really fine presentations. And as I mentioned, you don't need to do a PowerPoint, that's just fine. And I appreciate those who have sent me their content and continue to work with me to get it right, so that's good. See what else. I'll be sending out the invitation with the revised agenda or finalized agenda tomorrow to all invitees. I guess I've emailed you multiple times that we will meet here. The reason we need our own devices is to pick up the audio when you do your presentation, to make things easier technically wise. We will run the slides through my desktop, so that we're not having to switch back and forth. And so I'm looking forward to a good breakfast. I hope we have good discussion, productive discussion from our participants. Most of the invitees responded, and you know, as you can understand, they have very busy schedules, so many will be sending their local representative legislative assistant, so nevertheless, it should still be a worthwhile conversation. And I really appreciate the work that everybody's put into their assignments.
Mr. Harvey?
I was just going to ask, is there any way, if you're going to run the slides from your computer, that they could be tagged in there so we can keep up with the slide to make sure we're...
Sure. I'll talk to Austin about that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to try to send the slides to everybody before the meeting, so you'll have them, and get them uploaded at the last minute. I'll be working on them later tonight to get them uploaded into Board Docs, so look for that to come.
Thank you.
And Dr. Sinha, the public can participate?
There should be, there should have been a press release about that. Yes, the public can attend. Hopefully that release will have the Zoom link, where they can reach out and provide it. This will be simulcast on our YouTube channel, just like this meeting is going now, so people will be able to participate at that time. And again, it's just a conversation with our legislators to share with them some of our priorities that we would like to see them work on over the next year or so.
All right, Dr. Sinha, thank you. Excellent work for you and your team and everybody. We're looking forward to Friday.
Just a question, Dr. Sinha.
Go ahead.
Is there any way I can get a list of the attendees? I know that, I saw the invitation, just so I know who my audience is for my commentary?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tros. All right, we'll now move on to I six, which is the Education Task Force. And I do want the board to be aware that we have a city leadership, school board leadership meeting. And as a result of that meeting, we would like to acknowledge that there is an effort a front for us to see how we will get both boards or groups to make decisions. And so in doing that, realizing the difficulty to get reliable data and all that COVID suggests to us, we are going to ask Dr. Carter and myself, Dr. Gupta, who is a part of the Steering Committee, of course, Ms. Morrison originally was and now I am, we are going to kind of survey our board around a couple of things and be able to get that feedback. And in our December meeting, we will schedule an opportunity for the board to make a decision around a couple of options that would be presented to us. And we will have some conversation with the members of council on the Steering Committee, Dr. Gupta and myself. And then we will have that before you for the December meeting. And so that is as much as I can share today. Mr. Harvey?
Dr. Coleman, respectfully, I would like a little more understanding of what is being proposed to take place. This body as a board voted to approve the work of this task force. And my understanding is now that three members of this body will meet, will meet with members of the council's body, and then come back to this board with a motion to do something?
Let me just try to do it this way. It would be two, the two representatives at present would be Dr. Gupta and myself. Dr. Carter is the vice chair and I as the chair of the board will, at the advice of council leadership, we will deal with some questions with our board members, engage in some conversation with the individuals from council, and then bring a recommendation to this board on our meeting in December. And so we have had conversations with Mike Gillette, we've had conversations with individuals related to council. And so this is the best approach for us to take, Mr. Harvey. Again, we're trying to recognize reliable data, we're trying to recognize what COVID has done for us, and we're trying to give this facility studies and demographic studies a good chance to be able to move forward effectively. So we'll be having those types of interactions with each other leading up to the December meeting. Mr. Harvey?
If I could, a follow-up. Again, respectfully, sir, I feel that those discussions should be held by this board. This board is a body voted for that task force, and it sounds to me like two members of this task force are going to, or two members of this board are meeting with another group to make a decision and come back with a vote before this board to determine this.
This board will make a decision conceivably at the December meeting. No decision will be made. But to get alignment, when you're dealing with two bodies and you're dealing with the realities of COVID, and how do we get reliable data that will be meaningful for us 10, 20 years down the road? This is the wisdom, this is the best way for us to do this. But this board will deliberate in the December meeting. It will not be a decision made by one or two of us. That conversation is to try to move us to alignment, so that when we have our meeting in December, we can dispatch of this in a positive way. Dr. Gupta?
Just to clarify, you and I have not met with anybody.
No.
There is no plan to meet anybody.
No.
It's the leadership team which regularly meets, it's the board chair, vice chair, superintendent, and the others in the city. So just for clarification, you and I have not met and there is no plan for any such meeting.
That is correct. We will be communicating, getting the thoughts of board members. Dr. Sinha?
So just checking my understanding, so what you're saying is between now and the next board meeting, you will be having conversations with all the board members to collect information?
That's right, that's right, Dr. Sinha. That's what I'm trying to...
You're going to summarize that for us at the December meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Where we will deliberate as a full body? Is that what you're...
That's exactly what I'm saying, and that's when we will make a decision. Mr. Harvey?
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, why are we not, as a board, deliberating that as a board? Why is it individual to individual? Why not consider this as a body? We are as a body vote, not as individuals. We do not have, no particular board member has even more power than any other board member, and we only have power when we are a board.
I think that's what's going to happen on December. I just don't have the date in front of me, but I think, well, I don't think that's what's going to happen in December. And leading up to that time, we will have conversations developing, but all of that will be presented at the December meeting. Dr. Sinha?
I would recommend, I think, to get at what Mr. Harvey is concerned about, is that if, when you have these conversations as a way of collecting information, that you summarize them all, rather than give us a distilled summary?
I'd be...
Because, so that we, so that everybody can know what you heard from each other, and we have all that information disclosed for that December meeting, when we then deliberate all that information and come to whatever conclusion we're being asked to reach. Is that fair?
That's fair to me. The date is December the 7th, is that the correct date, Madam Clerk?
So...
Hold on, I'm just trying to get clarification on the day.
Yes.
December the 7th?
7th.
Dr. Carter, that you want to say?
I was going to say, in the individual, it's nothing new, it's just, we always talk to each other and just to get a feel sense for where everyone is. And then we come here and deliberate, and you're free to say whatever you said prior to this. I mean, we're not going to withhold any information or alter anything, because we'll all be here and we'll all be discussing this again.
I will forego any further, I will forego any further comments at this point.
All right, Ms. Morrison?
And that's, from the beginning, that's kind of how we worked it. We started out with city and school leaders. We worked out what we thought we were doing, would do, then we took it back to each respective organization and brainstormed, but we had conversations about it. And I think the conversation we need to have, from my point of view, is pretty clear. We either say the task force ends because we started it two years ago and we're not in the same place, or we modify what it is that task force focuses on, as opposed to is it what we're dealing with now? And I can't remember what the third one is. Or we select a new task force to meet the needs of what we are. So I think those are the kind of discussions that we need to have. I think it's a good idea to figure out where people are looking, so that you have the time to think about what you want to do. That's just from my perspective. It's been 20 months. And I can concur with the two. We've had no meetings with anyone else.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. And again, in those discussions, the same thing will be presented to every board member. And again, we have in discussions with council leadership, some of the things have developed since our meeting that we had, and we just want to be able to share all of that in a very powerful and positive way, with each board member then have a deliberation. I also want to indicate that this is going to be a board decision. We are not asking our superintendent, I can't speak for the other side, or city manager for that matter. This will be a board decision. This isn't something that Dr. Edwards is driving. In fact, her involvement and the Steering Committee members' involvement was not at the level of committed work, and there were no recommendations brought from any of the committees anyway. And so we just want to make that clear. Whatever we're going to do, that's coming from the board. And it will, it will work itself out, Mr. Harvey, as you're suggesting, one way or the other at the December meeting. All right, thank you all so very much for that and your patience with it. I seven, Partners in Education, Dr. Brennan, if you could share for us with that?
There's been no meeting so far since our last meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. All right, I eight, Education Foundation, Dr. Sinha and Mr. Tros.
No report.
No report.
All right, and lastly, Beacon of Hope?
No report.
Thank you so kindly. All right, we will now move to section J, Comprehensive Strategic Plan, School Board Objective 2.5.1. Dr. Edwards?
So we heard earlier the facility study, which is a big part of our comprehensive strategic plan, but we do want to be purposeful and pause and acknowledge when we do achieve some of our objectives. So 2.5.1 is implement high-performing school board practices that support positive outcomes for students. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge this board for all of the professional training that board members have had. And the SBA would also like to acknowledge the board for all of the professional training and support of all that you do for students. So receiving an award of recognition is Dr. Gupta, I can tap that down there. Also from the SBA, receiving an award of recognition, Dr. Sinha. And she may be listening for her service last year, but another award of recognition is one of our former school board members, Ms. Belle Evans, and we'll make sure that she gets that. And then we move up to an award of achievement, which comes with a nice brass pin, and that goes to Dr. Brennan. And another award of achievement goes to Mrs. Morrison. And we start to move up in terms of participation in professional learning as a school board member. An award of excellence now with a silver pin goes to Mr. Harvey.
All right.
And the next award is an award of honor, which is a gold pin, and that goes to Dr. Carter. Okay, and the final, the top award, and Fort Hill will love this, because they are the Starfish School and the whole Starfish model, but an award of distinction goes to Dr. Colvin. So let me just take a moment to celebrate and pause and say thank you for all of your extra time and effort in learning and governing this school that we can do the best that we can for students. The second section, if I can continue on the strategic plan while I'm there, is under our financial objectives, and we are at 3.11 and 3.12, which talks about staff compensation package and the budget. So in this section is our budget calendar. It is budget season. And we, I had a wonderful meeting with staff personnel and parent advisory, and we will also use those two groups to get some budget information, budget input for them, so they have homework to do that. But we're going to pause right now to talk about our next steps. So our school administrators will start to meet with school staff to get budget priorities at a school and department level, which would move up to the administration level, which we would bring to the school board level and following our budget calendar. There is input session, we have two budget hearings. One of them is at the end of the budget cycle, where we present the budget to the community, but this felt it was important to add another one, which is not mandatory, at the beginning of the budget cycle to get input from the community for their budget priorities. And I know we are in the middle of trying to finalize the date, and I don't think we have everybody in there once we get a date for that public budget hearing.
We have all except for two.
All except for two, okay. We will let the community know, but I will tell you, it is the opportunity for our community members, staff members, families, parents, to come out and meet with the board and share what they think should be the budget priorities for the operating budget for next school year. So let me give you an example of some of the things that are already in the works. The first one being staff compensation package. You know, we've done a lot of work this year in trying to make Lynchburg City the employer of choice and increase the wages for our staff and our salaries for our staff. The most recent change was with the bus drivers, I think I shared with you last time, that we added a dollar per hour to all of the clusters on the bus driver pay tables and 50 cents per hour to the bus assistance. Prior to that, we made some changes in the RN nursing schedule, as well as making adjustments for technicians. We are continuing to look at that. Next set of priorities, and we are really feeling it with this worker shortage, are our instructional assistants, secretaries, and custodians. We continue to look at that in the current school year and hope to have some recommendations there. But going forward and developing the budget for next year and multiple years out, because we are looking at multiple years of how do we sustain and get up to the proposed minimum wage in several years of $15 an hour. All of our employees are not at $15 an hour. And I did do just a couple surveys around town. There are other jobs that you can take at other organizations with no experience, and they start above $15 an hour. And I think you heard from one of our students and supportive of our staff that we have to get there. So we will be presenting staff compensation as one of our top priorities and looking at the budget. Thank you for all the work you did last year. We added some steps for veteran teachers last year. We added some things in terms of tuition reimbursement, which we're about to kick off for the current year. So this board has done a lot to increase the perks for staff, but we really are trying to move to make Lynchburg City schools more competitive. So that is a big budget priority. And if you remember, in 2018, 19, that pretty much took a lot of our budget time when we did that. Another thing that we want to do, so let me first go back and give thanks, and then I'll tell you how that connects going forward with budget, is last year you increased the number of slots for the GovSchool. And then going forward, one of the things that we're looking at in our budget proposal is some kind of a credit or agreement for participation in the regional CTE academy at CVCC. They offer courses in CTE that we don't offer, such as welding, and we want to make sure that our students have an opportunity to take part in courses that they cannot get at Lynchburg City schools. We don't want to be in competition with ourselves, but we do want to expand opportunities for our students. So we are looking at putting that in the budget proposal. And I said all that to say to the community, if you have ideas and suggestions that you want us to consider, we need you to come out to our budget hearing, we need you to be talking to your PTOs, your presidents. I have a parent advisory as well that's going to meet again in December, so that we get the input from you. Thank you.
All right, any questions of Dr. Edwards regarding the finance objectives so stated? All right, very good. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, for both parts of our comprehensive strategic plan, which is good to see that we're working in harmony with that. Now, section K, unfinished business, K one will be our LCS community update. Dr. Edwards?
Absolutely. And this is the section of the agenda that I have a full team of folks who are going to assist me in discussing that. On the agenda, we have vaccines, boosters, the VISTA program, transportation and bus safety, community conversations, and the calendar. So we have a lot to talk about, and I'm going to kick it off with vaccines and boosters. And I believe Deputy Superintendent Pugh will be kicking us off with that.
Thank you. I just want to recognize the hard work of Director Brown and her team. They've been working tirelessly for the past almost two years navigating through COVID, which they are not prepared to do, and I just want to acknowledge them for all of their hard work. Director Brown is going to talk to you about vaccines and boosters, and then the VISTA program for random sampling testing.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board. In cooperation with the city of Lynchburg, Lynchburg City Schools will be offering a Pfizer and Moderna Booster Clinic on November the 5th at EC Glass High School from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for all city of Lynchburg employees and Lynchburg City School staff and their eligible family members to get those two boosters. We will also be providing a Johnson &amp; Johnson Booster Clinic when those vaccines become available to our area. Staff has already received a message and email to sign up through PrepMod to get scheduled for those boosters on Friday. And if they need any assistance, they can reach out to the Office of Student Services, and we will be more... and we will be more than glad to assist. In regards to the VISTA program progress, as an additional layer to our mitigation plan, we have been working closely with the Virginia Department of Health and also the Virginia Department of Education to start to implement a free COVID screening testing program for our students, teachers, and staff for, right after or at Thanksgiving break. We're currently diligently working on getting this up and running. The screen, and it will be testing of individuals who do not have COVID-19. We will do these testings and screenings, excuse me, these screenings throughout the schools, and it will be on a voluntary basis. This will not be mandatory. So let me say that again. This will be voluntary. It is not mandatory. We are encouraging all students and staff to participate in this program. One of the bonuses, if you consent to participate in this program, is that if you are exposed to a person that has tested positive for COVID, or if you are displaying signs or symptoms of COVID, we will have access to a test that can be sent home with the individual to test within 15 minutes with the proctor, and the results be given to that person by email, letting them know if they're positive and negative. This is a strategy to help us reduce the quarantine time for our students and staff, but also to give them some rapid results as well. And so information went out this afternoon for all students and staff and their parents and guardians. In working with Ms. Reeves and her teams, we will be getting out another communication in the next couple of days, informing staff how to register. And also, the consent forms will be there for the screening process and also to participate in the take-home kits if need be. And we will provide more information within those documents, as well as a video for you to watch for the screening process. The screening process is a simple, short Q-tip nose tickle that takes less than about 15 seconds to complete the swab. The screening will be done by a company called AAGES. They will come on-site, and they will test all of our students and staff members that have given consent for us to test them, and we will do it weekly. Please note this will be a slow implementation. We're going to phase it out. We're still working with the Virginia Department of Health and working on how to phase it appropriately for our school division. But that's the update on our VISTA programs. And lastly, lastly, just to give an update. Working on that prevention ideology and methods with COVID again, we went out, the chief of, excuse me, Chief Wormsor with the Fire Department, Hope Custer, Director Transportation, and Andrea Ryan, our nurse coordinator, we went back out to the Transportation Department, and we assessed again the buses. We got on buses just as a standard review for COVID practices, trying to see what we could do better, what we could do differently, and what recommendations were made by the fire chief as well. I just want you to know that within 24 hours, Ms. Custer met with the Transportation Department and debriefed them based upon what we found, our findings with the chief, and also reviewed recommendations and strategies. And they also installed some new Purell pump sprayers on the buses and have those up and rolling. So that's just a quick COVID update, just knowing that we are spot checking different places, different facilities, trying to check on our process and making sure that we're following our health mitigation plan as well.
Oh, man, I have a question.
Ms. Morrison.
Thank you. In our last COVID dashboard, I saw that the vaccination rate in Lynchburg was 42.3%. Do you have any idea what the vaccination rate for staff and employees, or our employees for Lynchburg City Schools?
For this school year, we did not take a new survey. We were going to wait to after the boosters, trying to promote some vaccinations. We did a dipstick at the beginning of the year, trying to encourage more people to get vaccinated. Last year, we were roughly around 76% of staff being vaccinated. And so after we do this round of boosters, we're going to try again to offer more vaccinations, and then we'll have a more accurate reading before, I would say, before the first week in December.
Thank you.
Dr. Brennan?
Director Brown, thank you so much for the information. Thank you for the organization of the VISTA program. I think that would be a great idea to be able to try to do voluntary screening and also to have testing available for individuals who have been exposed or have symptoms. With the approval of the vaccine for children ages 5 through 11 now, and our goal to try to get people vaccinated, I haven't seen the official report, but the comments before where they were going to try to encourage pediatricians and local physicians to provide that vaccine. I suspect that we have a number of students who probably don't have a primary care person. Is there, would there be any, would it be appropriate to consider doing a vaccine for our students the way we do it for our staff at some point in the future to try to encourage vaccination for our students?
I would say, Dr. Brennan, we would love to vaccinate the younger students. However, we would love to leave that up to our local pediatricians, and we will work closely with the Virginia Department of Health and our local pediatricians to help with transporting families and getting them there, helping with the locations of sites. We've asked for sites if they were going to, if the city was going to run, or any one was going to run some major health clinics for 5- to 11-year-olds, like some other jurisdictions and states that started this morning. We would gladly support it, but in terms of using our teams of nurses at this time, we would rather leave that up to the pediatricians in the Virginia Department of Health to vaccinate at this time.
Thank you.
All right, continue.
So you left off with transportation, and I don't know, I can't see everybody that's there. If Ms. Custer is on to just follow up a little bit more with transportation?
Yes, ma'am. Director Brown mentioned that we did meet with the fire chief, and he had several recommendations, all of which we've implemented, cracking every other window on the bus, and as she stated, distributing the Purell sprayers. They're really nice. They have a really fine mist that drivers can easily spray an entire bus in just a few minutes. We also, this week, welcomed a new dispatcher. We will begin interviews for the operations manager here in the next week or two. And with these two hires, this will give us a fully-staffed office. This month, we also recommended five drivers per hire. They're currently pending background checks and DMV checks and all that good stuff.
The Transportation and HR Department have been working hand in hand and been pretty busy, but we're so glad to have you on board with us and happy to support our Transportation Department. Okay, moving on, community conversations, getting out there and having real talk. Director Reeves.
Good evening, everyone. On Monday, October 25th, at the Daniels Hill Center, we held the, this year's first in a series of many, community conversations. Dr. Edwards, Jasmine Tucker, and I discussed the Dual Capacity Framework of Family Engagement, and we provided guidance for our parents and guardians who were present on interacting with teachers at conferences and in phone calls to make sure that they're getting what they need from their teachers. In the spirit of collaboration, members of Leadership Lynchburg 45 joined us to share their family engagement project. It's a game board, much like the bingo game board, but they use the theme "Unite." It is designed to unite students and families by doing activities together. During the question-and-answer period, attendees provided us with feedback that will be used to help us in the area of family engagement. One of the suggestions is to be sure that we continue to promote the great things that are occurring within LCS by showcasing some of our teachers and our staff members. I'm pleased to announce that we are, who started that process. We have asked our faculty and staff members, as well as our parents and students, to give us feedback, to tell us about those top-performing teachers who are making an impact in their lives. And we're getting that, that feedback. It's coming in, and we're actually very excited about it. If I could share with the board just one, let me get to the spreadsheet here, just some of the comments, just briefly, because I think that this is what it is that continues to keep us focused and grounded on the work that we're doing here in LCS. One of the questions is, why does a staff member deserve to be recognized as a top performer? She loves her students and their families, makes a connection with students with special needs. We love her. She makes virtual learning easy because she goes over and beyond the students and fam, goes over and beyond for the students and the families of students. And these are the comments that are coming in about our faculty and staff members. We have information already on bus drivers and custodians, and it's just really exciting to see this come in and also to engage our community members, our family members, to get their input. That's one of the things that we strive to do. I'm very excited that the next meeting is November 22nd. So our next community conversation, November 22nd. It's a Monday at 6:00 p.m. at St. John's Episcopal Church located at 205 Elmwood Avenue. And that topic will be academic success.
Thank you, Director Reeves, and again, these community conversations are for everybody, so please come out and join us. We welcome your input, your feedback, and just meeting with you. Last on our update is it's time to do the 22-23 school calendar, which we do want to have a draft to the board by January and have something approved by February, so families know what to expect and when school starts in the summer. So some of that work has already begun. Last week, I met with the Superintendent's Personnel Advisory Committee, which is a member from every school and every department, and I asked them to give me calendar priorities. So let me give you an example of some of the priorities. Some of the comments were, can we start a little bit later in August than we did during the current year? August being the hottest month, and having the kids outside, it was a little challenging. Other comments were, absolutely, please let us still have two weeks off in December. Preserve that. Some other comments were trying to, again, get out early in May. So you can imagine the challenge of starting later and also getting out early. For our staff, just how we use professional development days and where they're placed. There were some comments about having specific days for instructional personnel, transportation personnel in the beginning of the year. Parents also chimed in. The same day, I have Personnel Advisory in the evening. I meet with parents, and we have one or two reps from each school, and parents had some similar feedback. But what they would like to see is some consistency across the calendars and knowing when is the touching bases meeting or the back-to-school night. They gave a great suggestion for the move-up. So if you are a Lincoln Middle School kid who is going to EC Glass, can you start getting those announcements for EC Glass a little earlier so that you know when to attend various things? So they would like us to see us use our calendar as more of a proactive communication tool in addition to just letting families know what days school begins and school ends. So again, we welcome your feedback. I have another parent advisory and personnel advisory. I believe it is in December. So if you are a school personnel or department personnel, please tell your rep and provide your rep with information. If you are a parent, you can get that information to your PTO or to your parent rep. Thank you to the parents who have already done their homework. I gave everybody homework, and they sent me back a list of things that families want to consider as priorities for our calendar. And lastly, I will reach out to our awesome student reps, because the calendar is for the students. So the most important voice, or one of the most important voices in a calendar will be our students. So we're going to try to get some student input in there as well, so we can develop the calendar. There was also a suggestion that while we develop next year's calendar, we do a two-year calendar and always stay two years ahead, so that this time next year, we will be reviewing what we already put in place, making sure that's still accurate, and then developing the new calendar two years out. So that was a suggestion from parents, and they were absolutely wonderful with regard to that. And lastly, of course, board members, please send your input for the calendar, and I'll work with Tina to make sure that even our board meetings are calendar-friendly when we set those up as well.
Ms. Morrison?
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. I also think that this year, you accommodated testing schedules. We revisited dates so that we could make sure that students had instruction prior to that. I wondered if you had any questions about start times?
Yes, yes, there were questions about start times. And I do want to remind the community that we changed our start times. The biggest change in our start times was due to us running three tiers in our transportation for buses. And I know we've hired a lot of folks. What I don't know is if we're at a point where we can revisit that. But that was always on the table to get our bus driver population back up, because we recognize, particularly as we're going into the winter, that it gets dark early. We're going to have daylight savings next week, and it's our youngest pupils that get out the latest. And our older students are outside in the morning in the dark as well. So yes, if we can adjust start times to be more favorable and still transport students. Also, we have to wait and kind of see, you heard a lot about that facility study and what that means in terms of transporting and zoning and a whole bunch of things that we have some decisions on.
Great, thank you.
All right, you may continue, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, that concludes the LCS community update, and I hope to see everybody on November 22nd.
Was it Dr.?
Dr. Edwards.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. It wasn't on the, it wasn't on the agenda. It was a last-minute ad. I just wanted to remind the board and our community members of several policies related to students and instruction. The first policy is Policy J O B, and that is Administration of Surveys and Questionnaires. And just a reminder that all of our policies are available to the public. If you go to our website and then to the School Board tab, you will see a link to Board Docs, and you can search for policies there. This policy, Administration of Surveys and Questionnaires, speaks not only to the participation in surveys and evaluations of our students, it also speaks to instructional materials and the, that parents and guardians have the right to request to review instructional materials. Also, the policy talks about participation in surveys. And when students are not required to participate in a survey or to submit a survey if it reveals some concerning information or sensitive information on the questionnaire. The other thing that I want to highlight in this policy is that any questionnaire or survey that is administered to our students that does ask questions of a sensitive nature, we are going to notify and have notified our parents concerning the administration of the questionnaire at least 30 days prior to that administration, so that they can opt out or they are notified of that survey and questionnaire. And again, I want to highlight in there that students are not required to participate. They may certainly opt out of surveys. The other policies that I wanted to highlight are around instruction. We've updated some of these just recently. One is IIA, and that is instructional materials. And this speaks to the selection and the process of how we select instructional materials. The next is IIAB, and that is in regards to supplementary materials and how we select those and the adoption of those. And again, I do want to highlight that parents may inspect on request any instructional material or supplemental materials as part of their students' curriculum and instruction. The last policy that I want to highlight tonight is Policy KLB, which is Public Complaints About Learning Resources. About Learning Resources. Um, and so if there are concerns from parents or community members about, um, some learning resources, this policy spells out the process that we have in place, uh, for the, uh, an individual that is concerned to submit a complaint. So I just wanted to highlight those as some policies, um, that have come to our attention related to students and instruction.
Thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pew for, uh, bringing us those, uh, policies there at the end, and, uh, we're going to get right to Dr. Senha. We want you to know that we wanted the community to hear that information coming, uh, from the board, uh, through the administration. Uh, Dr. Senha.
I just missed which policy, what the policy letters were for the surveys. Which policy is that again?
Uh, just one minute. That is J O B.
Thank you.
It is under section J of Students, um, and it is Policy J O B, Administration of Surveys and Questionnaires.
All right, thank you so much. And of course, whenever you are reviewing these meetings, you can go to the place on the agenda, uh, where certain information can be retrieved very easily, and that is under our community updates. But thank you, Deputy Superintendent Pew. Any other?
No, I almost forgot that. Well, we'll make sure to update that on the agenda too, so it's included.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Edwards. Uh, lastly, as we leave this item, I do want all of the board members who earlier received an email from V S B A and, uh, a copy was provided again for you tonight, and I will not dare read it, but this is V S B A's statement, uh, to an N S B A letter that was sent out to President Biden. And that that letter that was disseminated in that manner was without consultation from the Virginia School Boards Association. And so the V S B A, uh, does not support that letter, and, uh, this will just give you an understanding of the particulars around that. All right? Thank you so much. All right, at this time, K two, Capital Improvement Plan, Dr. Edwards.
Absolutely. So you heard a little bit about our facilities and, um, the need for a 10-year plan, and I'm going to bring up, oh, Mr. Gasky, I was about to look that way for you, uh, just to go over our C, Capital Improvement Plan, as well as we have some CARES, C I P, project proposals in there.
Good evening again. So I just took a round since I was here. So, um, tonight, we're bringing back, um, the proposed capital improvement plan. Uh, we previously, previously presented the plan at the work session on October 19th. The document that was, uh, attached to the agenda is a little different than the, uh, one we had at the work session. Um, the projects and the costs remain the same, uh, but we did add the, uh, yellow column, uh, which is the current funded projects, uh, for the, this fiscal year of 2022, just to give you an idea of how this worked, how it progresses through. Another change here also, um, is in discussions with the city, um, it was recommended that we move the cap, I mean, excuse me, the CARES-funded projects that we had in 2023 into 2022 because the money is, is there already. And that way, we can go ahead and get started on those, uh, on those projects right away. So that was a recommendation from the, from the city, and so, um, that's, that's what we did. We thought that was a good idea, gives us a little bit of extra time. I have to tell you that, um, the CARES money is a blessing and a curse in that it's a blessing for all the money, the additional funding and everything, but the time limits that they have put on, uh, spending this money, um, is, is going to be problematic. Um, as, uh, Blair Smith was talking earlier, uh, about, uh, construction and, and everything, the lead times that we're hearing on, um, materials and everything, anywhere from 12 weeks to a year. Um, and so all of these projects that are listed under CARES, um, you, most, well, most of them, um, involve equipment, uh, air handlers and things like that. So, um, it's going to be tight trying to get some of these things done in a year, two years, and even the, the, uh, third pack or fourth package of, of CARES money, um, which has a 2026 deadline on it, it's still, for the, for the size of those projects, it's, it's going to be tough to get those in. What we, um, what we do now is, well, we're seeking approval from the board tonight to proceed with this plan. The next step is it goes to the, uh, C I P committee, which, um, of, of the city, uh, which is comprised of representatives from all the city departments, um, plus the schools. And, um, we go through basically project by project, year by year, and rank and, um, hopefully put together a overall city plan. And that meeting takes place on November 10th. I would, or the first meeting, I would assume that it's probably going to be more than one meeting. So the, the title for this document that I have on the, is that it is a working document. It's a C I P working document. So this, once it goes to the city, could change drastically. What I feel the most confident about is, as I explained at the last meeting, that we, we kind of look at this as above the line and below the line, um, the above the line, the renovation and replacement projects. Those are the projects that we need, um, funding from the city, uh, to, to accomplish those. The ones below the line, which are the capital maintenance projects, are funded primarily or at least historically have been funded primarily through fund balance, um, return of fund balance from the city. Those usually are easier to, um, get approval on because the, the money is there, they don't, it's not, uh, we're not having to, to, um, compete with the larger city projects that they have going on. So, um, I do also, it was brought to my attention, I noticed, when I moved stuff, the projects from 2023, the CARES-funded projects into 2022, for whatever reason, my spreadsheet here didn't follow along, and the, uh, total costs in the far right column, uh, still show what, um, the cost that, that, um, from, um, 23 on through. So that needs to be corrected. Those, those costs that are associated with the CARES money will come off of that total.
Everybody understand that? Board members?
This is up for action. I just have one question.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Gasky. And so again, this is, um, K two, and it is for action tonight, but Ms. Morrison has question at this time.
Well, it's more of a statement. I'm reading a lot about, uh, containment ships that where materials and food that we need to feed our students are being held off the coast in cargo, um, containers, and maybe we should mention to our legislative, in our legislative meeting, that is something that they could definitely help us with, not only with building materials, but food supplies and other. It's not something that we can do as a school board, but I know that we're experiencing across the state and country shortages, and they say they're sitting off the coast. Just, just an observation.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. So noted by the chair of the, uh, committee and, uh, Madam Clerk, Dr. Carter.
I move that the school board approve the capital improvement plan. I present it.
Been moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Ms. Morrison, that we will advance the C I P working, uh, plan, uh, in the appropriate manner. Any further questions or discussion? Dr. Gupta.
Mr. Gasky, I wanted to bring one more thing to your attention. I know you have EC glass track, and I walk on that heritage track. It's wearing out, so just bringing it to you. I know the baseball turf, I, we walk there is decent shape, but the heritage track, um, uh, as an old man, I feel the pain in my knees when I walk.
That's a lot of use.
Yes.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that and see.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions or discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Scoop up, Member Trost.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Senha.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Gasky.
Thank you, Mr. Gasky. All right, we will now move to section L, New Business. We have five items, and first is the petition for license, uh, revocation.
Yes.
Revocation.
So this, we have a petition for a license revocation, um, and the investigative file. I am asking that the board, uh, vote to, uh, approve me sending both the petition and the investigative file for a former, um, Lincoln City School teacher to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction for further action on this part.
All right, this is for action. Board, what is your pleasure, the motion?
I'm willing that the school board approve that the petition for the license.
Revacation and investigative, investigative file be forwarded to the State Superintendent of Public Instruction for further.
I'll second.
Been moved by Dr. Carter, seconded by Dr. Senha in relationship to the motion. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, Member Mr. Trost.
No.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Senha.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Gupta.
No.
Scoop up, Member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Seven to two. No, seven to, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. L two is Fiscal Agent Authorization for the Virginia State Operated Program Budgets, 21, 22. Dr. Edwards.
So similarly to the other budgets that we have brought to your attention from Laurel and the Gov. School, the Turning Point Academy and the Blue Ridge Jail, we serve as fiscal agents for those, um, organizations as well, and what you have before you are their budgets. And Ms. LaConne is also available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions regarding this for Ms. LaConne for information tonight, it appears? All right, thank you so very much.
Can we move this to consent agenda?
If it is the pleasure of the Board, yes, we can move that, Madam Clerk, to the, uh, consent agenda for our next meeting, which would be December, and of course, it can be pulled if necessary. Thank you, uh, Ms. Morrison. We'll now move to L three, which is V S B A Delegate Assembly Nomination. And during the V S B A Annual Convention in November, uh, we have the opportunity to shape policy direction for the association through the delegate assembly, and this body needs to be a vital part of that and appoint an individual, uh, from our school board, uh, to be the delegate, uh, and we need an alternate as well. Uh, Dr. Gupta.
I think Dr. Carter represented us last time, so I'd like to nominate her name.
All right, we have, uh, Dr. Carter as the, uh, nominee for our delegate. Uh, Madam, uh, Dr. Carter.
And I was just thinking, maybe their role needs to go to the chair of the Legislative Committee, but I'm willing to do it.
What are your thoughts on that? Vice Chair's wisdom, uh, going forward maybe would be that the chair of the Legislative Advocacy Committee could be the delegate from the board. Uh, prior history suggested that rested with the chair, and if the chair did not want to, it would go to the next level. Uh, I cannot serve as a delegate, uh, because I'm a member of the V S B A Board of Directors. Uh, what are your thoughts? Dr. Carter is suggesting that that person would then be Dr. Senha.
Can I comment?
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate that, um, but I'm a little bit concerned about my time commitments and my ability to actually do due diligence to that position. So I'm, I'm just not so sure I'm the right person for that. I'm in, I'm, obviously, as the chair of the Legislative Advocacy, that does make sense, but I just don't think I can take it on, to be honest.
Okay, then we have the, uh, Dr. Carter is nominated to be the delegate. If you are able to allow, if I have to do it separately, that's all right. Could we get the alternate in the same motion so that we can carry that?
I have a question. Is this, this is done Monday afternoon virtually? Is that what you?
That is, thank you for that. Thank you, Dr., Ms. Morrison. Uh, that was extracted from the actual in-person session, so that's going to be a virtual session that is going to take place on Monday, and I just don't have the time for me right now, but it will be virtual, Dr. Senha, uh, not at the actual, uh, convention itself. Is there an alternate? Now, alternate is necessary because if in fact, Dr., um, Carter cannot be in place, the alternate, and all of this is recorded in the nice booklet that they present. Dr. Senha, I mean, Dr. Gupta?
About Mr. Trost, if you will.
Mr. Trost?
What is the, give me an idea about the time commitment.
It's, you have to be.
One meeting?
One meeting.
And what's the preparation? I mean, and what's the role?
Preparation, you're going to vote on different, uh, amendments or what are the legislative positions are going to be for the, for the year.
You're going to get a great big thick packet of information.
Oh, my God.
And you got to, I'm just, I'm just keeping it real.
And also to, to read, to read up or to, to make sure that you really look at and attend the, the meeting, but it's recorded and you can get it.
I, I'll tell you what, I've been here since July. I'm not sure I have the, uh, the, the foundation and the experience to, to really do that position proper justice. I, I mean, I don't want to get in there and do, and we would need to represent, oversee school systems the best. I just don't know if I have, I'm honored to be, to be nominated, but I'm not sure I have the proper, um, experience.
Okay, Dr. Senha would like to say, and we're going to move on.
This is just to, for an alternate?
Yes.
Yes, alternate.
Oh, I'll do it.
All right.
Sorry, she wrote.
So, uh, Dr. Senha is agreeing to be the alternate, and, uh, Mr. Trost, we do respect your thoughts, but you should be honored that this Board would.
Thank you.
Consider you for such a capacity.
I appreciate, but I hope that, that, that wasn't misguided information.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Atul.
Next time, we'll give you a special.
Exactly.
If I'm not mistaken.
The gold pin on there.
Gold pin.
Dr. Gupta entered the motion, and is there a second for that?
A second.
All right, so we have been moved by Dr. Gupta, seconded by Ms. Morrison, that, uh, Dr. Carter will be our delegate and Dr. Senha will be our alternate for this year's V S B A Delegate Assembly. If there are no further questions or discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Scoop up, Member Trost.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Senha.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, Member Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, if you could forward that information in the morning to V S B A so that they can have that included appropriately. Uh, L four is our Equity Task Force Advisory Committee. This is for action tonight, and Dr. Edwards.
Yes, so these are the members of the Equity Task Force, um, which Ms. Reeves, Director Reeves, uh, facilitates. Uh, so any comments, Director Reeves?
No, this is just some submission of the names, uh, for membership for the school year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Reeves, and of course, you know, this is very important, and I believe you see the names before you, and these are the individuals that would be called to serve, um, on the task force, and then they can move on with their work. Dr. Brennan?
I'd just like to ask a brief question because I'm, I'm so impressed by the, the job that, that Doc, that Director Reeves is doing with her department. And when I look at the responsibilities, the six things that are listed, and, and this may be a, a topic for another time in another manner, but for example, that the staff, that their role is also in recruitment and retention of staff, um, and that they're involved in the students' academics and climate, as to whether that should be under other, another department. But I just wanted to bring that out for either discussion now or discussion at another time. Just seems like they're doing a lot of things.
That's not what the staff is doing. That is the, um, that's our equitable practices, the six areas of equity that we, as a school division. And I think when Director Reeves. that we, as a school division. And I think when Director Reeves and I first met, one of the first things we said was equity is everybody's business, not just limited to an office. So what you see there is an all-inclusive of where are we looking at when we talk about equity? We're looking at staff, we're looking at students, we're looking at training, engagement and involvement of our families, cultural diversity, and of, of, of course, access and the removal of barriers.
Great. Thank you very much for that explanation. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Is there a motion to approve the names submitted?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the names.
Well, I want to, I mean, discuss this. I, I mean, I know a couple of the people here.
All right.
Do I have any more information on these people?
Okay, Mr. Trost, we can have a discussion. If, if there's a second to the motion, then we'll have some discussion. Is there a second to Dr. Brennan's motion? Seconded by Ms. Morrison, we'll now have discussion. Mr. Trost, your concern?
Oh, do we have, I mean, I know a number of these people, and they're very fine people, but I don't know exactly, I know, I don't know all of them. And if they're actually going to be guiding which way our school system is going with respect to this area, I'd like to know a little bit more about them.
Director Reeves?
I'm happy to share information. I just need to know what it is that you would like to know about them. I will, just from a very historical perspective, let you know that this group is, came about as a result initially of the concerns that, much like were mentioned in our last school board meeting or work session, very concerned about the success of our students, excuse me, you all. And so we, under the guidance of the Office of Civil Rights, created the Equity Task Force. Many of the members' names that you see here are people who have been passionate about the work of equity and learning more even about it as they, you know, as they help shape and make recommendations to the school board. And I would be happy to present any more information about different individuals as, as needed.
And may I?
Dr. Edwards?
Also just add, since you are a new board member, Board Policy, B C F Z, which is advisory committees to the Board. So we have a policy in which, which dictates these advisory committees, their roles and responsibilities. And the Equity Task Force, the C T E, School Health Advisory, School Health Advisory, which you're going to hear from next, and, what am I missing? Special Education. So those are the four advisory committees. They are volunteers who serve on these committees with, with tasks. And each, usually at the end of the year, although throughout the year, the advisory committees will present to the Board. So the Board does get a slate of names for each one of those groups. You've already approved the first three groups. This is the last group to be approved.
And remind, and remind me how these members, I mean, was there a, a public call? So, and these are the people that signed up to be.
The volunteers.
Volunteer. But, and then do they submit resumes or just, we take, and we, how do we determine, are all these the people, the only people that volunteered? Or were they say, hey, we're not going to take these people, we're going to take other people?
Each of the committees typically holds twenty, twenty members. And in some years, we've just received twenty members. It, it isn't uncommon for the twenty members to also just invite folks to sort of, I'll say fishbowl. You can come to a meeting, even though you are not a voting, voting member. But Director Reeves, for this particular slate, I don't know how many applicants or volunteers you received.
So what happens is we always ask those who have been anticipating if they'd like to continue. Many will continue. We do have, I want to say it's four new members this year who, who participated in that community interest form that was sent out and wanted to participate this year. Parents, some who have been through our school system and now have children in our school system have, have, of course, issued, you know, a little statement about why they'd like to do this work. I also, this includes the non-L C S employees. We do have a group of L C S employees who attend the meetings as well.
All right, but we're, we're not privy to their statement of why they want to be on the, on this committee, correct? Advisory Committee? You, you vetted these people?
I have heard their statements, yes.
All right.
All right.
And that information is not available to us as voting members, correct? Or is it? I mean, you're asking me to vote on names that I don't know anything about them, well, other than a few handful. Go ahead.
I'm going to, I'll, I'll be very honest, I have never had anyone to ask me for the information. I'm sure it's public information and would be happy to share what it is that, you know, whatever information we have.
I would just suggest that if we're going to vet the Equity Task Force members, that we be equitable and vet all of the.
Absolutely.
Advisory Committee members?
Absolutely. I don't, I must have been asleep at the wheel with the other.
But I, I think that Mr. Trost's questions are legitimate. Obviously, going forward, this kind of information can be looked into prior too when it comes to us for action at that particular night. Of course, if we would, if we were to do that for this, we would do it for all.
Absolutely.
But these names are reputable persons that are being presented to us tonight. All right? Is there any further questions or discussion on the motion? All right, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll? Yes, you would approve this list? No, if you choose not to?
Scoop up member, Mr. Trost.
No.
Scoop up member, Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Senha.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up member, Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move now to L five, which is School Health Advisory Update. Dr. Edwards?
Sure. Another one of our advisory committees is our School Health Advisory, and they had a meeting on October twenty-seventh. And I believe Ms. Sherri Brown is going to give the update.
It's going to be Director Brown, Latonya Brown.
Director Brown, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Like Dr. Edwards said, School Health Advisory met on October the twenty-seventh. The nurse coordinator discussed school health updates, including the upcoming COVID booster clinic that L C S would be hosting at East Glass High School. She also introduced the L C S's plans for Vista screening testing program and also talked about M O U, memorandum of understanding, that has been created between the Johnson Health Center and Lynchburg City Schools to provide the framework for school-based dental programs for the elementary school students. That should be starting up very soon, being that we just got the M O U signed. So as soon as they get in and start providing some dental cleanings to our students, we will let the Board know. In addition, we have had a company called Conexus come in and started vision screening our students. This program offers screening for all of our kindergartners, first grade, third, fourth, seventh, eighth, tenth, and eleventh graders for potential vision problems. They help us identify students, and we refer to students out as needed that are having troubles with their vision. If students need assistance with glasses, we also refer them to different agencies for assistance to make sure that they all receive the glasses or whatever needs that are needed for their visions to be, excuse me, their vision to be taken care of. Secondly, the school nutrition director discussed working on wellness champions within the individual schools per the policy for student wellness guidelines. The policy was discussed, including the need for this School Health Advisory Board Committee to review the policy line by line and implement measures to gauge how well the policy is being followed by individual schools. The nutrition director reported changes are being made to the menus due to the shortage of healthy food supply to the schools. And we had a robust conversation about what type of foods would be offered and, you know, still maintaining a healthy and well-balanced meal. The next meeting will be November the seventeenth, and we meet by Zoom at twelve o'clock. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions for Director Brown?
Thank you.
All right, we want to say thank you to you, Director Brown, for that update. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, we will now move to section M, Superintendent's Comments. Oh, I am so very sorry. Dr. Gupta?
Is Ms. Brown still there or has she left?
Director Brown? Go ahead, Atul.
I just wanted to thank you for everything you're doing for this community. You have done it for last almost, it's like year and a half in running these vaccine clinics. So I call you a vaccine warrior. You have been a God-sent to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a team. And I would say, you know, my whole L C S team, central office, the teachers, transportation, everyone has chipped in, even Greta Ford. I don't want to start pitching out names, but with help with running clinics, school board members and all, it's truly taken the community to vaccinate and to ensure the safety of our students and families. And just thanks for giving us the opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. That was very well said. Thank you, Director Brown. Now we will move, you're welcome. Now we'll move to Superintendent Comments.
Sure, and I'm going to keep it brief, given the hour. It is National Family Engagement, Family and Community Engagement Month in November, and we have been engaging in both with families and community. You already heard about the Daniels Hill, and you're going to meet me on November twenty-second for our next community conversation. I've also had the opportunity in the past couple of weeks to meet with some of our partners, including attending the Ed Foundation meeting. You know, they are one of our, our local partners and support our staff and our students in a tremendous way. So thank you to them. I've also attended the V C I C meeting, Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities. And we have done a lot of work with them, including training for our staff as we all work together to create a more inclusive community. Also attended the Y M C A Board Meeting. You heard a wonderful report about the Y M C A Power Scholars Program in our summer. So we have an excellent partnership with them. I sit on the advisory board for the Randolph College Educator Prep Program, and they started something new with their Take-Two class structure this year as they work with us in student teaching, and they have an accredited program. But their Take-Two program is focused on having students take fewer courses at the same time and with the hopes that they will be more engaged and more successful and, of course, graduate on time. And the, this is the first year they did it, and the data looks very, very good from that. So we're happy to support them with that. We too had Unity Day and wore orange here, so we're glad to celebrate. We could all use a little anti-bullying all over the world right about now, so it was great to, to have that. We did have a follow-up press conference to questions and inquiries that we received regarding our data. So thank you to media, which is always here, for attending that and let, giving us an opportunity to tell more about the story of our kids. This building, if you have not had an opportunity to tour this building, we have a lot of new folks here. So on Friday, we had a meet, greet, and maybe treat. So we kind of went around and just met everyone. We see each other on Zoom, but just the opportunity to network and, and see the new folks, particularly the folks from Jackson Street who have moved in here, and we're so happy to have them. Lots of professional development. I did attend the VAS Fall Conference in Charlottesville, Charlottesville, which was just packed with information regarding everything from student achievement to budgeting and a whole host of things, legislative affairs. I also, this today and tomorrow, attended the National Principal Supervisors Cohort for the A A S A meeting, which is all about training and working with principals to, to ensure that they are excellent instructional leaders, which we have here in Lynchburg City School. So it's been a busy couple of weeks of just mentoring and doing some work and being out in the community and talking with folks. And again, to the community, please, please, please send us your feedback regarding the budget and also the school calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. That was very, very good, and we appreciate all of the work that you are doing at this time. We will now move into Board Comments, and we'll start with Mr. Trost.
Well, thank you. Yeah, last meeting, as the Board knows, I was very concerned about the data that we saw concerning the reading and writing levels of our children, math levels of our children. Since that time, I did reach out to some community leaders, and I continue to reach out to community leaders. I will tell the Board that the community leaders are on board to do what they can do to try to help these young children. And part of that is I've iterated to some of these community leaders, is we really need to get to the children's parents or guardians or caretakers, because we have a lot of children out there that perhaps don't know how to study or don't have the time to study at home, because no one is giving them, you know, turn off the TV, turn off the radio, turn off the cell phone, and focus and make these children study for an hour, two hours, or three hours a night to get the work done. So we have that. I continue to reach out to different people. I've got a huge list that is given to me, other leaders. So if you haven't heard from me, I will be calling, just asking you to help the students, doing whatever I can on that role. In addition, I was fortunate enough to visit one of the schools, and I, I talked to some of the boots-on-the-ground people, and they've given us some ideas, which I've shared with Crystal. And then finally, just by happenstance, I, I've met, I run into a couple of different teachers at, at the grocery store and out and about. And teachers, we hear you. We, we share some of your concerns, and we're pushing to help with those levels. Number one is the salary. We hear you, and we're working on that. It's an uphill battle, but I think all of our Board members agree with you, teachers, that you're underpaid. And we're doing what we can to try to do, to help correct that situation. So that's what I have to say, and we're there doing it. Just bear with us.
Thank you, Mr. Trost. Dr. Brennan?
Along with Dr. Nilis and Dr. Carter, I had the pleasure of attending the Community Conversations Program, which I thought was a great start to reach out to the community, thanks to Director Reeves and her team for making that be successful. Look forward to future ones. I had the really fun opportunity to go to the Friendly City String Quartet Concert a couple of weeks ago. That was a group of J M U graduates that came together to do a, a, a program to support Lynchburg City Schools and to raise money for violence for them, which was a great thing. And it was run by Greg Childress, who was one of the strings instructors for Lynchburg City Schools. It was really great. I've started my annual visit to the different schools, and it's been a little slower this year with, with COVID and busting and things. But I've been to Glass, Heritage, Dunbar Middle School, R S Payne, Sandusky Elementary, Paramount, Bedford Hills, Paul Monroe Sheffield, Fort Hill, the Empowerment Academy, and stopped by the Virtual Academy while I was at the Empowerment Academy. And the message, I think, is pretty much all the same, which is the teachers and staff are all working very hard. They're working really hard, and it's very difficult to transition from coming from the hybrid system last year to the in-person. It's been difficult for everyone. And one of the comments the elementary school principals made, which was interesting, is you think about that we went, that a kindergartner, you know, went out of school halfway through their kindergarten year, and they're coming back now into their second grade. It's a huge jump. So second and third grade, as I say, particularly has been so difficult academically. So as, as Mr. Trust, Attorney Trust has said, we support the teachers. We think they're great, but they clearly need our help. And I think this shortened days is going to help some, but they need a lot more help. It looks like the Delta surge is, is calming down some, but there are still a lot of patients in the hospital who have, who are very sick. The Academy of Pediatrics, as of the end of October, stated there's been about six million cases of COVID in children less than, less than eighteen years old. There's been about, about seven hundred deaths in the United States from that. We now have a vaccine that's been approved by the F D A and the C D C for children ages five to eleven. So we now have vaccine for children overall, K through twelve. And I hope that will encourage the parents and the children to get those to decrease the risk to children, because one death is too much, and to decrease their risk of quarantining and losing time in school. So I know that Director Brown will continue with her good effort. Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Ms. Morrison?
I just have three quick things. The first is I want to invite you all, if you did not see the preschool initiative summary that they did, they did a slideshow, and, Dr. Brennan, the information from your wife was really powerful and had quite an impact about what preschool programs can do for our students and our community. So if you've not had the chance to watch it, it's on, I, I got an email about it. So the second thing is, if you like show tunes, East Glass Theater, Glass Theater will be doing a kind of cabaret of. Glass Theater will be doing a kinda cabaret of noted show tunes, and there are songs that will appeal to everyone, and I think it's next Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The other thing that I want to say is to echo my colleagues here, is that I came on this board five and a half years ago, now six years, and my objective was that we needed to work on salaries. And that has been my calling. I started out that way, and I will end that way. And I will end my career on the school board, still fighting for salaries. So I appreciate the support and know that we're gonna still do what we can do for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Dr. Carter?
I had the privilege of going to Sandusky Elementary past Friday and see some of the amazing and creative pumpkins that were on display, and the students had a parade. Just wanted to say that. And also, as Dr. Brennan already stated, we were at the community conversations, and we had a nice group, and we hope that more will come out. And it's a great opportunity for parents to learn and to ask questions, and also just to be engaged. We need that engagement. It really was with teacher retention and also with the student learning.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Dr. Senha?
Well, I echo pretty much what everybody else has said, and I also wanna thank Director Brown and the Health Advisory for coordinating the screenings. You know, when I was in second grade, and I had a last name that started with W, so that's back in the days when they sat you alphabetically, I was at the back of the room, and I always got in trouble for getting up over my desk to do this. And nobody realized I couldn't see till they did a vision screening and realized I need prescription glasses. So thank you for that, because, and, you know, my parents, not like they neglected me, they just didn't realize I couldn't see. I didn't realize I couldn't see. So anyway, that's a good thing, so thank you for that. Other than that, I'm good.
Thank you, Dr. Senha and Dr. Gupta.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Harvey?
In the interest of time, I would simply say I support exactly what my fellow board members have said about our staff and making that a priority this year. The other point that I wanted to make is, we talked about proactive communication tools, and it's been brought to my attention from several parents that seem surprised about the, about the shortening of the Wednesdays, the early dismissals. I said that I would share this with the board. I did tell them that emails were sent out prior to our board discussing it, to let parents know and invite them to come to the school board to comment. But it was at the conclusion of all of my conversations where I felt like I defended the fact that we put this information out there. They asked if it could be something that could be, you know, somehow repeated. I don't know how, but I'm just sharing that information because that was presented to me.
I'm sorry, repeated and sent back out to families?
Yeah, I don't know if it's in-
It's in the principal's newsletter. Like, it was in multiple things, in addition to a district-wide distribution. And I know I just read like three different principal's newsletters. They all are mentioning it.
I agree. I'm just sharing.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. All right, I would like to quickly, but with some respect and honor for the magnitude of this presentation. We recently, as a board, completed our Master Board Training, and this will be further recognized at the V S B A Annual Convention in Williamsburg. But I do have in front of me a very nice plaque. And, Dr. Edwards, I am asking that this will be put somewhere where it can be displayed prominently by the public, but it's a plaque that reads, "V S B A Leadership Advocacy Support, V S B A Center for Board Development Awards, Master Board Status, October 2021, Lynchburg City School Board." And all of our names are here, right? Everybody's name, so beautifully presented. And so, Dr. Edwards, I'm gonna give this to you, and we're expecting this to be put somewhere where it can be seen by all for our great accomplishment.
Closet.
And each person. And we would like-
Right there. Right this place, right there.
We would like to give, there's a certificate coming from V S B A to each of us as a part of the Master Board for completing the training required to become a V S B A Master Board, completed October the 2021, and this is signed by Gina Patterson, Executive Director, Virginia School Boards, and that's yours, Dr. Edwards. Dr. Sharon Y. Carter. Susan D. Morrison. Dr. Michael J. Nillis. Wow. Dr. Robert O. Brennan. Dr. Atul Gupta. Dr. Kimberly A. Senha. Gary E. Harvey. Randy T. Tros. And yours, yours truly. So just a handful of boards have received this distinction, and I'm very proud of this. All right, that now moves us to informational items, and you can see Section O, that the Legislative Breakfast, and we're excited about that, Kim. The next meeting for the Legislative Advocacy has been canceled for reasons that have already been explained. You want to comment on that, please?
It was also canceled because the Southern Regional-
That's right.
-meeting is that day.
That's right.
At 4:00.
Right, and our Southern Region Chair doing the best he can. I guess I'll get the information out to you, but you'll get it. The next school board work session has been canceled due to the fact that we will be making strides towards Williamsburg. The Annual Convention is the 16th through the 19th. The next Finance Committee is Monday, November the 22nd at 3:30. And our next school board meeting will be Tuesday, the 7th at 5:00 P. M. here in the Administrative Building. If there are no other thoughts, meeting is adjourned.